Okay, good evening. This is Hatton Littman speaking. Welcome to the Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees Special Meeting. I'll do a few quick heads up about how to use the Zoom functions in our meeting, and then we'll turn it over to Chair Holland to get the official meeting started. If you're new to Zoom, here's a few tips that will help you for tonight's meeting. If you take your cursor to the bottom of your Zoom window, in the black bar on the bottom left, you'll notice you have icons for unmute or start video. That's how you can control what we see and hear from you during the meeting. We'll be keeping everybody muted unless they are making public comment. You'll notice also that there is an icon for chat in the middle of the screen, and we will have chat available to chat to the host in case you're having a problem, but it's disabled for everybody else. And then if you need to raise your hand to make public comment, you're going to want to click on the button that says "Participants" along the bottom. When you click on that, it opens a white window with a list of everybody on the call, and at the bottom of that white window is a button that says "Raise Hand." When you raise your hand, you'll be placed in order, in the order that you raise your hand, and we'll call on you in order when it's time to make public comment. If you're joining from the phone and you'd like to make public comment, you would press *9 to raise your hand, and then *6 to mute and unmute yourself. And I'll remind you of that when it gets time for public comment as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Chair Holland to start the meeting.
Thank you, and I will call the meeting to order, welcome everyone, and take roll call. I believe every, all trustees are present either electronically or in person. Is that correct, Hatton?
I'm still not seeing trustee Vogel. Oh, there she is. Yes, ma'am, it is correct.
Okay, thank you. So we will go ahead then and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any requests from any trustee to revise the agenda in any fashion? I'm not seeing any hands go up either in the room or on Zoom. So we will go ahead and move forward to item number four, which is public comment on non-agenda items. If any member of the public wants to make a public comment on an item we won't be discussing tonight, this is the appropriate time to do it, either now or at the end of the meeting. The only things we ask is if you have an unusual spelling to your first or last name, if you spell it for minutes, and then if you represent an organization, if you can identify that organization, and otherwise we ask everyone to keep their public comments to about three minutes.
Zoom, can I hear the meeting? Right, it just got quiet.
Oh, okay, thank you for letting us know. That's very interesting.
I can hear you, Hatton.
You can, okay. Uh, trustee Holland, would you mind speaking again?
Sure, trustee Decker, can you hear me? Okay. So just to repeat, it's public comment on non-agenda items. If any member of the public wants to let the board know about anything they have concerns about or just want to inform us about, please raise your hand virtually, and we'll try to call on everyone in the order in which hands are raised. Again, this is public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, we have two hands raised. Would the individual with the phone number ending 1527 please unmute and make your comment? You can press *6 to unmute yourself.
Hi, Hatton, it's Chris Onsbray. I was actually just raising my hand to let you guys know we couldn't originally hear you.
Oh, thanks very much. I'll go ahead and lower your hand. Mr. Shearer, I believe you're next in line for public comment.
Thank you. My name is Ezra Shearer, E-Z-R-A-S-H-E-A-R-E-R. I just have a brief public comment in response to some of the discussion from the last board meeting. It seemed like there was a lot of disparaging remarks made about teachers and the job that we're currently doing under the conditions that we're doing, generally speaking. There's definitely outliers, and there's definitely frustrations among everybody. There was also a lot of praise directed towards the ability for this administration to raise the Missoula Online Academy from nothing into a school in four weeks. And I would just like to point out that we knew we needed the Missoula Online Academy on May 1st or June 1st, and it was an administrative decision to wait until August 26th to choose to then start building the Missoula Online Academy. I'd also like to point out that there were definitely faults in the Missoula Online Academy's rollout, including students not knowing what classes were offered up until the day before the start of the Missoula Online Academy. And so if it's the custom to point out the deficiencies in individual teachers or anecdotal experiences at these meetings, we might want to see if we can have a full picture of the deficiencies of the district as well as the successes of the district. And that would be my public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Shearer. Are there other hands raised, Hatton?
Yes, Marissa is next. You can unmute and make your public comment.
I'm Marissa McIntock, M-A-R-I-S-S-A, M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K. It's that loud librarian again. I wonder if you're tired of hearing from me? Except, hearing implies listening, and listening's not something you guys have been doing. Also, you guys haven't been communicating very well with us. I had to dig through pages upon pages of CDC information to find the reporting on schools, only to find that it was woefully inaccurate. The reporting from 9/25 said that Missoula County Public Schools had one case? We all know that's not true. Additionally, I think it's interesting that the board is asking us, teachers, to make decisions, well, our job is asking us as teachers, to make decisions in which we have to care, have to listen to data, and have to put our students first every day when they're not doing the same. Interesting. I hope they listen this time.
Thank you for your public comment, Hatton. Is there any other, none?
Yes, Jessica Sewell, if you would unmute and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Jessica Sewell. I am, I would like to thank Ezra Shearer for opening up this comment opportunity for me. I'm a parent of a student of Missoula Online Academy. I started a Facebook group to help support parents and other caregivers during this time as we felt very strongly that communication and support to get this up and running was not sufficient, and we were all kind of left not knowing what we should do or what to hap, what was going to happen. A number of the parents have compiled a list, a letter, of concerns and things that we would like to open a discussion about moving forward. I would like to present that letter. I'm wondering if I should do that in a comment section or how I would do that. Yeah.
Ms. Sewell, I understand that you have sent that letter to our public comment email address. Is that correct?
Yes, one of the other parents has done that.
So that will be recognized on our website under the public comment that gets catalogued in between the publications of our board packet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other hands, are there any other hands raised for public comment on non-agenda items?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to 5A old business, which is to approve adjustments to the MCPs in-person learning schedule. And so, Dr. Watson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Holland. Thanks for the board members for coming back together tonight. I understand that we reviewed the decision last Tuesday and did make, and that recommendation made a point of saying that we would come back together if case numbers are rising or if there's any hesitation with our schedules. So that's part of the reason I wanted the board to come back together this evening, so I appreciate that, that ability. I'm going to ask Hatton to share a document on the screen that we received from county health yesterday, and this is also available on our website. And for those trustees that are in the room, there's a copy of the document at your table. And I'll just give Hatton a second to pull that up. So this is a multi-page document. It's the same document we reviewed last meeting, but it's updated every other Wednesday. And so this is the information we received yesterday from county health. Just a couple of things to note, the positivity rate is increasing. The transmission rate is also increasing. So if you look at that very first paragraph, pretty, pretty good summary of a report from the county health officer that we received earlier this week. I also just wanted to make a couple of other points on this document. So on the second page of the document, there's a pie chart that shows you the number of active cases by age group. And you'll see that 16% in the 10 through 19 age group, 20, or 52% in the 20 to 29 age group. And then on the third page of the document, there is a line graph which has several lines on it. You'll see one that's spiking very steeply that was pointed out to me just a little while ago this afternoon in a different meeting that that's the 19 to 24 age group. There's lots of other great data in this document. As I said, it is posted on our website. Most, all of these graphs are also posted on the county website, so public information available through the county. But I did want to just draw the board's attention to this. We know that there's a current spike in cases in our community. I think Cindy Farr might be on the phone in case the board has questions about any of this data. I'm not sure if she was able to join us this evening, but I wanted to start with that.
I'm here, Dr. Watson.
Thanks, Cindy.
I'm here.
So I think I'll stop there and just see if you had any questions for Cindy. I know she's busy at this time.
Trustee Sturbis, and then trustee Lorenzen, and then I'll check online to see if there's questions.
I was wondering why Missoula County's cases aren't on the school page that shows all across the state.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if the microphone was on. So Cindy, the question was about the, the state. The state has a page up that's reporting school numbers, and the question from trustee Sturbis was, how come Missoula, Missoula Schools' numbers are not on the state reporting page? I think that was the question. Am I correct?
So the reason that Missoula County's numbers are not on there is that the state did not actually give us any kind of a heads up that they were going to start posting that, and did not actually operationalize it any way for us to get that information to them. And so we're currently trying to figure out how to do that within the, in fact, the Montana infectious disease reporting system that we use, and then they're, they're going to be pulling that data from that system. So while they're, they're posting the report, it is extremely inaccurate at this point because they didn't give us at the local level a chance to figure out how we could report that efficiently to them. So we are hoping that in the next week or so that we will have that figured out within Midas, the state reporting system, and that it will become more accurate over the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Ms. Farr. Trustee Lorenzen?
I'm looking at the graph that does show that spiking age group, and I guess if I saw that graph, I would assume that, that it ended on September 1st. So, but that doesn't seem right because that doesn't match the number. So does it, does September represent the end of September and August represent the end of August?
And could you pull that graph up again so I can look and see what she's talking about?
Yep, and trustee Lorenzen, could you clarify which page you're looking at? This one, right here. Okay.
Yeah, it's because we got so inundated with cases during the month of September that our data crew is still trying to comb through all of those cases in order to be able to accurately portray the data. So we were getting there, but yeah, in the last, especially the last two weeks, we, as cases have spiked, our, our team is trying to catch up with the data part of it. So that'll get updated as well as soon, as soon as we have accurate data.
So is it September 15th? Is it September 1st? Is it more recent than that?
They're, they're doing it by month, and so that goes to September 1st.
So those are August cases then?
Correct. Those would be August cases, and I can tell you from looking at the case data that I have, it's going to likely be very similar. I should have that data by next Tuesday.
Trustee Decker has her hand raised.
Trustee Decker, go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, Ms. Farr, it's great to have you back. Thanks so much for coming. Last week, we talked about the, the concern that it was possible that our hospitals might start to see an overwhelmed status from the number of cases if they continued to increase in the community. And I'm curious whether you can share any information about what's happened in that regard over the past week? Yeah, so we've definitely started seeing an increase in the number of hospitalizations that we're seeing, not only in our own county cases, but also in cases that, in people that are in our surrounding counties that utilize our hospital system for, for care. And so I can tell you that they're definitely getting busier. I met with some representatives from the hospitals today, and they are having internal discussions about at what point they need to start pulling back on doing elective procedures. One concern is that the CDC recently released information, I think it was about a week ago, that showed that in communities where the, you see a spike in the 20 to 29-year-old age range, that generally, within a couple of weeks, you start to see spikes in other ages, and particularly people over the age of 60. And I know that yesterday during our county superintendent's meeting, we discussed this, and Dr. Watson can sure chime in on this as well, that, you know, this age group has a lot of interface with all other age groups because a lot of times they're tutors or babysitters. They also work in a lot of frontline, you know, establishments such as bars and restaurants and grocery stores, and they have a lot of interaction with their parents and their grandparents. So it's unique to this 20-year-old age group that, you know, they just have a lot of interface with all other age groups that is definitely unique to that, to that age group.
Thanks. Any other questions from trustees? Oh, trustee Mercer?
Sort of the same question as last time from a county health perspective.
Sorry, trustee Mercer, could you get closer to the microphone?
Same question, is it working?
It's plugged in. Okay, let's just make sure it's plugged in.
Yeah.
Come here, we're fine. Yes. All right, it's connected. Um, I have a last four left to talk. I don't know if it's, we have to scroll through.
I'm using my voice.
Sorry, sorry. Negative, Gary. Oh, gosh, I'm a little stumped and don't know the system really well and how to make that speaker go on. Uh, we can certainly move. Yeah, that is plugged into this guy.
Trustee Old Person, is your microphone working?
I hear it now.
But the light's gone.
The light's off. It went on. Try the speaker on that one either way.
That's this one over here.
Hold on.
Oh, you can hear it there.
I can hear it.
Sounds good. We're engaging in some stopgap measures, so trustee Mercer can ask his question.
So anyway, the same question as before, basically. From a county health perspective, do you want us to close the schools? Do you have objection to us leaving them open? What is the county health perspective?
At this time, we're not seeing school-aged children being the main drivers of the disease in our county. But that said, we are seeing the ripple effect of those 20-something-year-olds that are being the main driver of disease in our county right now. And so I do support that, you know, the, it's really important for the kids to be in, in-person learning, but that maybe we should take a little pause and, and take a look at what our cases are going to do over the next week or two before having all of the kids in class all of the time.
Thanks, Ms. Farr. Any other questions?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, then I'll turn it back over to Dr. Watson.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of other data points I wanted to, to share with the board. So in your board packet this evening, you've got some data on page one that is district data, district-specific data, and you'll see a couple of charts there. Tables, I'm sorry, not charts, but tables on page one showing, the first one at the top is confirmed COVID cases, and we'll talk about that one in just a second. But I want to go to the second one, which is the close contacts to a confirmed case. And note, please, that's from 8/26 to 9/25. I've also got some current information for this week. I do just want to point out that the data that we're sharing as far as close contacts is somewhat fluid. It's self-reported. And so when a student is a close contact to a confirmed case, more, more than likely outside of the school is what we've been seeing. When a student is a close contact to a confirmed case and has to quarantine, we typically get a phone call from the parent letting us know that they're a close contact. And so that's the data that's represented here. And so what Mrs. Farr was speaking to earlier is definitely something that we're seeing. So just because we don't have, necessarily have cases at K-5, what we do, we are seeing some close contacts. And really what those are, are students that are close contacts to a confirmed case outside of school, but they're still required to quarantine. So that, the, the spike in cases in that age group, that 20 to 29 age group, is impacting our schools in other ways, and you can see that in that close contact table. And then I'll skip back up to the top. The confirmed COVID-19 cases for students and staff associated with schools is in that table. And you'll see, as of the end of last week, we were at eight total, and that was since the start of the school year. And, and that has increased this week. We will add another 12 cases to that this week. And the majority of those cases have been at the grade nine through 12 and in our staff. So I think there were six at grades nine through 12 and six among staff members. So it's definitely the confirmed cases we're seeing this week definitely impacting our staff and those grade nine through 12 students. And then as far as the update for close contacts this week, we'll, we'll likely add, and that data was just turned in today by the school secretary, so I haven't had a chance to go through all of it, but we're likely going to add another 70 close contacts this week. And those are, that's spread across all grade levels. However, 60, a quick assessment of that, about 60% of the close contacts are at grades nine through 12. Let's see, so talked about that, the close contacts. I wanted also to mention to the board, you know, sometimes we don't know how it impacts schools in other ways and other restrictions that we've put in place. And some of this is done behind the scenes, so we don't necessarily, the board would not necessarily know this. But we have placed some other restrictions this week based on the increased case counts, specifically based on what we were seeing in some of the adults that were in the building. So I just want to elaborate a couple of things we've done as far as restrictions. So we've, we've taken a step to try to limit the number of adults in the building that, that really are not necessarily staff. So we had some volunteers that were coming in from the university to do some observations. We've limited those students from coming into the buildings. We also had some professional development planned for October that would have involved some, possibly some staff, some adults from outside the building coming into the building, and we've canceled or postponed that professional development for October. So just, just keep in mind, we are doing the, what we think is a good job of trying to limit the extra adults in the building. Also, this week, we postponed some school activities due to quarantined cases, cases that were quarantined. And then, again, we do this often, but we took a special time today to review our protocol around activities and specifically extracurricular activities and travel related to extracurricular activities, just to make sure that we were doing what we could to limit the spread among extracurricular activities. Finally, what you'll see on the last page of your board agenda is revised schedule, and this is different from the schedule that was approved last Tuesday. And I just want to point out some of the major differences in this revised schedule. And again, this is an in-person schedule. It does not impact the students on MOA because the MOA students have their own schedule. So a couple of big changes that we made here, we pushed Willard. So Willard was scheduled to start on that hybrid-plus model, and we pushed that back to the quarter, so that, that got pushed to November 9th. And the other change, we moved K-8 back one week. So K-8 was, was scheduled to make a transition on October 12th, and we moved that to October 19th. And then probably the, the largest change is, happens at, at the quarter. At November 9th, we're recommending to start, or to stay in that hybrid-plus rather than move to the Phase 2, which is every day, every student. So just to be clear, and the definitions are there, the hybrid-plus has students in school four days a week versus Phase 2 has students in school five days a week. So just a subtle difference there. Also, you'll notice that I haven't, that administratively, we haven't made any decisions after November 20th. I think we need to continue to have discussions with the board and with our staff and, and do some planning for after November 20th. November 23rd is Thanksgiving week. We have some ideas there related to parent-teacher conferences and remote learning that I'm happy to discuss, but we also want to make sure that gets in front of the calendar committee. So just a, just a couple of other things from the administrative side. I, I understand that moving to a hybrid-plus two weeks from now seems counterintuitive with cases rising, and, and, and I understand that. It's this difficult decision. I just want to be clear on that. I understand the board will deliberate on this, and, and, and I, I just want to add that the administration believes that this is, this is the right move for a couple of reasons. As I elaborated last time, we have some concerns about what students might be missing on the remote learning days, specifically at K-5 and 6-8, and also the lack of services that we're able to offer when students are not in school. And I mentioned that at the last meeting. The final thing I'll say is that by all accounts, and we've talked to the county health office many times, by all accounts, the, the spread in our community is really in that, a lot of it is in that older age group. We believe that we can manage having students back four days a week under this hybrid-plus. We believe it's safe. We believe we can manage that, and, and we believe they need to be in school for that, for that four days a week versus two days a week. So that's the administrative recommendation. It, it is different than last Tuesday. We've moved the schedule back slightly, but that's, that's the administrative recommendation. So with that, I will just pause and see if the trustees have any other... So with that, I will just pause and see if the trustees have any other questions for me.
Any questions? Looks like trustee service, and then trustee Lorenzen, and then I'll check on Sue.
I guess my main question is, I don't feel comfortable setting dates without it connected to data. I'm tired of just doing this blindly. I think that's crazy. As long as these cases are going up, I think we should stay in hybrid minimum, and we should look at what it takes to go 100% remote.
Are there any other questions? Trustee Lorenzen?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. My question is, are you concerned with the fact that Week 8 is an unusual week for the kids? And then Week 9 is the change week. And have you thought maybe it'd be better to do the change week after a week that they're accustomed to?
Yes, so originally, we were going to make that change on October 12. It is a short week. It's a three-day week, whereas October 19 is a five-day week. So we felt like coming back after that three-day week would be a good time to make that change. And so I'm not concerned about making that change on October 19.
Any other questions for Dr. Watson? Trustee Mercer?
Yes. Two questions. One, have you thought about doing another, like, survey of what parents want, especially the in-person parents? And two, my concern is for, has always been for the working parents of young children. I don't know what they're doing. So I ask that not as a rhetorical question. Do we know what, like, a single parent is doing with their second grader right now during those days? Is that something that we know? Where is that kid on those three days? Do we know that at all? That's my question.
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't think we have that data specifically. So, and we haven't thought of another, doing another survey. Not to say that we wouldn't, but we haven't done another survey. What I would say is, anecdotally, we know that our community partners have really stepped up and done a great job. Assistant superintendent Lodge can talk to you about some of those programs that have been stood up by Parks and Rec and YMCA. So we know that there's options for families out there, and many times either low-cost or no-cost options for families on the remote days. So that, those options are there. I, yeah, I don't know if I can answer any other questions about that, but I know we can talk more about that if you have questions specifically about those other programs.
Follow-up. So like Parks and Rec, though, sorry, kids are physically coming together on those days somewhere, just not under our supervision, right?
Yeah, and I don't want to overgeneralize that. I mean, some kids are finding other ways. They might have, you know, tutors at home or parents staying home with them. But if they're participating in a Parks and Rec program or YMCA, yes, they are coming together in various locations. In fact, one of the items on the agenda tonight is for rental of Mount Jumbo related to YMCA care.
Any other questions? Okay, trustee Decker, go ahead.
Thanks. You know, I continue to just be a little bit confused about what is the, like, trigger for moving between phases. Maybe you could help me understand if we move to hybrid-plus in, you know, two and a half, three weeks, why there's a change to go, like, what is the transmission difference between hybrid-two or hybrid-plus and Phase 2? Once you have all kids in the buildings, four out of five days of the week, and the spaces are being used by that number of kids and staff in proximity, I'm curious about what the, like, what's really the shift then when we go to Phase 2? Like, how, I have had questions about the intermediate nature of that step and how we decide that we're ready to go there. And I guess the related thing is whether, hearing what Cindy Farr said just now about recommending not, where that puts us?
Yeah, it's a couple of questions there. I think I'll try to answer both. And please, trustee Decker, let me know if I don't. But so first of all, one of the things I just want to point out about the hybrid-plus, it does leave Mondays as a remote day. And part of the reason that I believe that that's important is, I elaborated that a little bit last time, but I want to just reiterate this. And part of the reason I think that it's more sustainable for our staff is that when you take a look at the close contacts across our community and how it's impacting every single school in some way, so when we have a close contact, that's basically a student that's been quarantined. And what it means is that the staff member that's involved with that student has to do a lot of preparation for that student that's in quarantine. And that's, again, part of the reason why I think the hybrid-plus is a good middle step, because as we continue to have students that are quarantined across the district, having that Monday where staff can really help prepare and perhaps meet with that student virtually on Mondays is going to be really important. So you asked about triggers, and one of the things I think we need to consider is to continue to collect this data, this district-wide data, on the number of kids any given week that are in quarantine. And I think that's going to tell us a lot, you know. If that seems to be getting better over the course of the next few weeks, then perhaps that's, you know, that's something, that's a piece of information that we need to have before we can move to Phase 2. So the major difference between hybrid-plus and Phase 2 is that Monday remote day. And I just want to be clear with the board. Part of the reason I think that Monday remote day is so important right now is because the number of close contacts that we have across our district. So I would encourage us to continue to watch that data very carefully in the coming weeks. And then the other thing that you asked about, and trustee Decker, please help me, because I forgot the second question.
Thanks. It was, the question was asked of Cindy Farr just earlier, whether she would recommend at this point that we change our, you know, enrollment structure or plan. And it said that she would recommend to continue to, I forget the exact words that she said.
I'm happy to jump in and just clarify. So I just, yeah, I recommend that we keep an eye on the data and just give another week or so, which I believe is what Dr. Watson is trying to do by pushing that move into the hybrid-plus a week out, is just giving us a little bit more of a cushion so that we can watch that data. So I am, I definitely feel like we'll know more over the next week or two. And so then you guys will have more information, particularly by the middle of next week, we'll have more information that we should be able to share that can help with some of this decision-making.
Can I ask what piece of information might help make this decision more clear?
Yeah, that graph that we were looking at, that I said that it only went to the 1st of September, and we had it broken up into the actual school age ranges. I'm hoping that by next Tuesday, my data folks will be able to have that, all of that information for the month of September, and that should make it a little bit more clear.
Did that answer your questions, trustee Decker?
Yeah.
Okay.
That graph right there.
Okay. Trustee Decker, did you have other questions?
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Are we going to be visiting this again on Tuesday when we have that graph?
So it's a great question, trustee Decker, and I understand your confusion. I think this is very difficult, because we're trying to plan for two weeks from now. And I do, I just want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, I appreciate the fact that the board came back together tonight. And if we need to come together next week, I think we should be prepared to do so. But this data is changing very, very quickly. And so I think it is difficult to plan two weeks from now, but that's basically what I'm saying is, this is the plan for two weeks from now, to move into that hybrid-plus. But if the board needs to come back together to continue to discuss that, and then I think, I think that's what I'm saying, is we can do that. And I appreciate the board's willingness to come together. But knowing what I know about the data right now, my recommendation would still stand to move to hybrid-plus on October 19.
And trustee Decker, since we'll have a regular board meeting next Tuesday on the 13th, I'm guessing that there will be a recurring, pardon? Two weeks. Oh, two weeks, okay. So we would have a board meeting before the decision would be made to go into hybrid-plus. But as Dr. Watson indicated, we can also have another special board meeting if something really unusual happened. Trustee Oldperson?
My question is, I don't, I'm very nervous for us to move forward. I think hearing what the community is talking, community is saying is that right now, let's just see how it is. And obviously, the numbers are going up, and that's why you're saying the data changes. And it's changing by going up. And I think a lot of, like you said, the numbers are from that certain age group and how it impacts every different levels are what Cindy Farr was saying. The university ends Thanksgiving week, then they go on break. Can, have you thought about staying in hybrid, not hybrid-plus, but hybrid until then, until the university goes on their break? Then that would, to me, that would make more sense, especially with that population being the ones with the highest number of case count and impacting everything.
Yes, that's an excellent observation, and I think it's worthy of a discussion. I would tell you that part of the reason that I'm making the recommendation to move more quickly with K-5 and 6-8 is because we haven't seen the case counts go up in those grade levels. We haven't really seen that. And so I honestly believe that the rising cases in our community is not due to anything that we're doing in K-5 or 6-8. And so I believe that the rising cases in our community is due to other things that are impacting our district. But I'm comfortable saying that it hasn't impacted K-5 and 6-8 in terms of positive cases. And so that's why I made the recommendation to move those grade levels sooner rather than later.
Any other questions? I have a, oh, trustee Abgarres, and then I'll have a question, too.
Thank you. Rob, you put in your email to parents earlier in the week, you have concerns, especially for younger students, as you said, the ability to maintain educational progress in the hybrid on remote days. Do we have any feedback, data, anything of how our students are responding to hybrid? If we stayed in this until the end of November, how far behind would they be? Would they still be on track? Do you have anything around that to give us that would, what the effects would be if we don't move forward?
I don't know if I can answer that specific enough. We can definitely look into that, and I can make a note of it. I would, I want to be clear with the board that our teachers are doing a heck of a job in keeping kids moving forward, and I don't want to discount the hard work that they're doing. What we do know at K-5 is it's much harder to do the remote learning piece at K-5. What we're, end up doing is paper packets and some of those sorts of things. Just this last week, we've opened up a couple of virtual online portals for students at the younger grade levels. They're using a portal called Seesaw, where they can start posting videos and start posting assignments. And I know our staff is working really, really hard at that. But I also worry, too, about our kids that don't have access at home or don't have support at home to access those materials. So it is something that's of a concern for us. And as I mentioned last time, the other concern about food insecurity and mental health services for kids on the remote days.
Any other, trustee Oldperson?
So you're talking about students who disadvantaged, who don't have access. Do we have those, that number? Is that something we can get? I would like to know the numbers of people who have foods, like, I think that's important, because if that's what, I've heard you say that, like, four times already tonight. And I think if we had the numbers to show that, I think that would really help. And I think we keep forgetting, these kids, these children, they're resilient, especially the younger ones. I feel that. And it's temporary. But I think to keep, to not have any positive cases in K through 8 or any of that, that's, we should, that should be our goal.
Any other questions, or I don't know if that...
Yeah, so as I mentioned the last time, what, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we can get those for you. What we noticed is fewer students this year accessing the food on the remote learning days than we saw in previous years. And so that's a concern for us, and that's gone up. We've done some things specifically to get food into certain areas of our community, and we'll continue to work on that. But it's just not the same as it was last spring when we were providing food. And so that could be for a variety of reasons. It could be that they're getting food elsewhere. Maybe perhaps the food bank is providing it. But we can get some numbers on food insecurity. I'd probably base it on what we were delivering last year versus what we're delivering this year. And then the mental health services, I mentioned at the last meeting. Our contract with the mental health services is with Western Montana Mental Health. And what they've told us is that they're delivering less service this year. And they can give us some hard numbers on that, and I can get those for you, but I don't have those this evening.
Trustee Decker?
I'm curious about our assumptions and our approach all the way along. I wish that there was a way, and I'm curious whether you've heard about models for this or if there's any way that we can think about this. But when we think about having all children in the buildings, because we know there are some children who aren't getting what they need, and I understand that in a perfect world, we would be with all children in the buildings, because that's what we do. That's how this works. That's what's normal. But, you know, if there was a way to assess a child's need to be in the buildings more of the time because they need that more, I would love to see a way for us to serve kids in the buildings who need to be there for mental health and food service and those things, and base our having of kids in the buildings based on need. And I know that's, seems a little bit impossible, but I wonder if there are districts that are doing it or if that's a kind of a model that's ever been considered? Because it seems that our desire to serve that, the group of kids who truly aren't getting what they need in a Maslow's hierarchy kind of way by not being able to be in the buildings. We should be finding a way to get those base-level needs to kids and thinking about that just in a little bit more flexible way if possible. I'm wondering if you know of any models like that, or if that's something that we can at all consider?
Yes, so I haven't seen any models like that, but I don't, I'm not going to say that they're not out there, but I haven't, I haven't seen anything like that. I think it's an interesting discussion when you start to include some kids and exclude other kids. So I think it would be a very, it would have to be done very methodically and done in a way that is transparent and in a way that gives any kid the option if they truly need it. Because we've talked about a couple of things tonight, food insecurity or mental health issues. There could be another very legitimate reason that a student needs to be in school. And so I just would want to, I would want to be careful on how we approach that. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea. I think it's a good idea.
Trustee Mercer?
So just following that, what about hybrid option where if the parents' families want to come back to four, they do? If they want to stay two, they do?
Yes, and if you can imagine, that would be a little difficult for a teacher to plan around, because what we're asking them to do right now is very, very difficult. But we know that if they've got some working at home and some working at school, it becomes pretty difficult. So I would want to approach that cautiously as well.
Any other questions? I just have two. So if I'm looking at the information in the agenda, right now, there are no cases for kids grades K through 8 as of 9/25. And then of the others that were added that you reported on, there's still no student cases. that you reported on, there's still no student cases in K through eight.
We, we, we have some staff cases in K through eight. I want to be clear, when you look at that data, the staff is in a separate column, but some of those are related to K through eight schools, so just to be clear on that, we have, we have, we have cases in some of our elementary schools related to staff.
And then my second question is, and I don't know if it's more for Ms. Farr or you, and I don't know if she's, yeah, she's still here, but since we, our feeder schools are all coming in two, do we have any sense of what models they're using? Are they using hybrid? Are they all back in school together? I know what Seeley's High School's doing, but I don't know what Seeley Elementary's doing, Hellgate Elementary. I know we heard that Target Range is in hybrid, I believe, but is there any, someone in the county creating data about that? Just so we know, how many kids are at school all day, every day that have siblings in the high school level?
Yeah, so, the, what I know of is Lolo and Bonner and Hellgate Elementary, I'm sorry, let me take that back, Lolo and Hellgate Elementary are every day, every student. Bonner and Target Range are in a hybrid model. Bonner was going to move, I just don't know when. I, I believe, last time I spoke to the superintendent, it was gonna be mid-October, but I don't know if they've moved into an every day, every student. Target Range was going to move on, I think it was September 21st and they delayed that, so they're, they're still currently in a hybrid model. As far as whether, I think, and I don't, I don't know if this is your question, but whether that makes a difference in case numbers or anything like that, I don't have that information.
And do you know anything about Seeley Swan Elementary? I'm assuming that's a small enough population that are back to school.
Yes, I believe Seeley Swan is every day.
Any other questions? Trustee Vogel?
At Potomac, we are every day, all day, every student. We have some that have opted out and are doing online learning. We had one positive case with a student, and that student was quarantined along with close contacts for two weeks. They've just returned and we're back to business as usual, so it's, it's gone very smoothly.
Thanks for that information. Any other questions? Seeing it looks like no other questions, then I will entertain any motion any trustee would like to make. The recommendation from the administration is in our packet. Trustee Lorenzen?
I move that the board approve the adjusted schedule for in-person learning as attached to our packet, understanding that this recommendation will be assessed on a weekly basis and any significant changes to the schedule will be brought to the board for consideration.
Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Abgarras. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
Um, I, I under, this is difficult, and I think, you know, hindsight is really powerful. I really believed we weren't gonna see this happen after September 12th that we saw happen, and, and I know our administration believed it too. Talking about whether we could go through the kids and decide who needs to be in school and who doesn't, I believe the parents have already made that choice. That's what the MOA did. If people felt their children didn't need school, didn't need to be in school, and they had all the supports they needed at home, they joined the MOA. So, the kids that are left, they, they need us. They need school, they need their teachers, especially their teachers. And I know the teachers are working really, really hard and I understand how hard it must be to try to create online content and in-school content simultaneously, plus provide learning for the children that are in quarantine. So, I, I think the administration has done everything they can in the best interest of the students, especially the K8, and so I support this approach. And, and I think we need to not second guess our administration, they're just really doing the best that they can.
Is there any other board discussion? Trustee Service, and then trustee Mercer?
I still say that dates, or it's too soon to have dates of the plan, I say stay in the hybrid until the case counts are way down. Back in the summer when we were talking about this and we were talking about whether we're gonna go on the online academy or go in person, we were talking about if the cases were steady or going down. Instead, they're spiking and we're still going ahead like nothing's changed. And I think a lot of parents probably wonder, wish they could go on the online academy now. So, I, I think the hybrid model, I think is doing the best we can, but to change something now in case they're spiking does not make any sense.
Any other board comment? Trustee Mercer, sorry, hi for that.
I guess I wanna start by clarifying, I'm sure I, what I said was taken and it wasn't meant to be last time as a, as a lot of disparagement of teachers. I meant to say that I believe the system where you're asking teachers to teach simultaneously in person and remotely is an impossibility. No matter what they do, I don't think they can do that, to be in two places at once. I think we should do a survey, I mean, we're, I, I do think there's some sense of what, I would like to know more what parents want. I think we should do another survey. I am concerned that we are baking in inequality, that the people who were financially or for whatever able reason to do the online academy are getting five days a week of new instruction, and we're, the families of working parents who couldn't do that are getting two days a week of new instruction, and that concerns me a great deal. For the record, I would have voted to go phase two from day one for K through five. So, for me, this keeps getting strung out, so for me, it's not a change, it's getting to be where I had wanted to be the whole time, so I will support this as well.
And trustee Vogel?
Speaking for, as a parent of two high school boys, I'm ready to get them back in school as soon as possible. The district that I represent has a very difficult time in remote learning. Our internet is spotty, it's slow, and from my two boys in particular, they attend Hellgate Thursday and Friday, and then Monday's remote, Tuesday, Wednesday are remote. The only problem is, my husband and I are working, we're not able to be home with them if they have any questions, and then all of a sudden, they're back in class on Thursday. The students at the beginning of the alphabet go to school Tuesday, Wednesday, they do their remote Thursday, Friday, and then they have the weekend where they have their parents or someone accessible to help them through any of their assignments. My boys have it back to back and come Wednesday night, eight, nine o'clock, they're imploding. So, I'm, I'm eager for them to get out of the house, I'm eager for them to start back at school and to get on that routine and on that schedule. And speaking from the, the families that I know that are way, way out in the middle of nowhere, they, they also need that same structure. Thank you.
Thanks. Any, trustee Abgarras?
Thank you. So, taking personal feelings out of it, I, I agree with trustee Lorenzen that we either trust our administration's recommendations or we don't in a time like this. This is something that they've spent a ton of time on, and so, they're not making this half cuff. We are looking at the best information we can, they're living this every day. We have not had a recommendation from the governor to close our schools or even to be in hybrid. The county incident commander for COVID says that she's not saying no, but to give it a little bit more time like the recommendation is. So, we either trust the professionals or we don't, and that's what it really comes down to. If, if Cindy Farr, Ms. Farr, thought that there was a reason for us to stay in hybrid or go remote, I don't think she would have been shy about telling us today. So, what it comes down to is either trust the professionals or you don't, and I trust the professionals. I think they've done a great job in Missoula County so far. They, they shut us down in March and rec, made that recommendation, we did it, and now they're saying cautiously proceed and see how the data goes the next couple of weeks. And so, I support the plan and I support what they, they say.
Thanks. Trustee Decker?
So, I, I trust the administration to be education experts because that is what they are, but it's my responsibility to be looking for the way that our schools support our community's values and our community's schools overall, and the way we, the way we make decisions as a district based on our values and our assumptions also. And I think this whole thing speaks to the fact that we expect our schools to do so much. We expect our schools to meet every piece of Maslow's pyramid that starts from people, that children's basic physical needs for safety and food, and goes all the way up to their needs for self-actualization through things like high school football and everything in between. And in a time of global crisis and local, uh, local really increase in risk across the community, what I trust is, is the values that say it's our first job to keep everybody safe, and that includes all of the people who work in the buildings, it includes the grandparents at home. What's so hard about this is that there are not a tremendous number of transmissions happening among elementary school kids. We are in a situation where we're having to look at what's happening across our community and use that information to try to inform what we do now, and it is exhausting to be making these decisions on a week by week by week basis. And if we started from an assumption that said this pandemic isn't going anywhere, we're going to be dealing with this for at least a year, and unfortunately, seeing what's happening across the community, there is a very strong likelihood that things are going to get worse at times. We are not out of the woods. And so, what I would like to see is a plan that, that takes a longer view, that supports remote and hybrid day learning in some really robust ways across the community that gets kids and families what they need, but also keeps the numbers of people who are interacting really small, because across the board, that's what people say keeps everyone safe. Interact with small numbers of people, especially when you have to be in not super well-ventilated enclosed spaces. Use all the precautions that are taking place and that we've seen happen really successfully, it sounds like so far across the first month. I, obviously, people are working as hard as they can to do those, but they're working with half the numbers that we're asking them to work with once we go to hybrid plus. So, I am, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you're not surprised to hear that I won't be supporting this plan, and it's not because I don't trust the expertise of the administration, but because I would like to see us have a much clearer metric for making these decisions that's consistent, and I would like to see us start from a set of assumptions that says let's plan and operationalize for the worst in a way that gets everybody what they need the best we can.
Thanks. Any other board comment? See no hands up? Then, I see a lot of hands are up, so I don't really know the order, so Hatton, if you want to kind of keep track of the order and just identify which people should make, like comment, I'll again mention, we would appreciate it if you have an unusual spelling of your first or last name, you spell it for minutes, and if you represent an organization, identify it and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Okay, our first public comment is Ally Diamond. Go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, yeah, I'm Ally Diamond's husband, Marty Cardos, M-A-R-T-Y-K-A-R-D-O-S, and I just wanna reiterate the, the point that I've made before and just say that what we're seeing in our community right now is sort of the early stages of the result of schools opening up, the university opening, and businesses opening, and putting a lot of people in really close contact with one another. We're just starting to see those effects. If the school system goes back to every kid, every day, which is what you're planning to do, then it's gonna, it's gonna make the situation get worse. I mean, it's clearly obvious what's gonna happen. Things are gonna get a lot worse, and I also wanna make the point that you really have no idea what role elementary school-aged kids are having in transmission, because you're not testing, you're not doing surveillance testing in the elementary schools. They might be really important vectors of disease in the community, and we just don't know that. I wouldn't assume that having all these elementary schools in, in the schools in person is safe. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Hatton.
Uh, next is Marissa, please unmute and make your comment.
My name is Marissa McLintock, M-A-R-I-S-S-A-M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K, and I'm here representing Porter School or myself and Porter School, but what I've heard from my colleagues, I speak here as a concerned advocate, giving voice to over a dozen conversations I've had with my staff friends this week. I feel very worried that one man is making choices for us and he's listening neither to facts nor community concerns. He said himself that he doesn't have all the information. I feel like we can't trust him. At what point is this big enough, a big enough deal that we can call a safety strike? Which, though a nuclear option feels like the only thing we can do that has the chief enough to make them listen? I don't wanna do that. I'm pretty new at this, but I feel many of us have gone unheard for so long that we're not even bothering to speak up because we feel like it's impossible to be heard. If you see people writing backwards on their screens, it's, we're aching, longing to be heard. What's it gonna take? This is the opposite of what a strong school's community should feel like. We've lost the equivalent of our Porter sixth-grade class to COVID in this state, and we're getting worse every day, and now we're being told that everything's fine, go about your business, and go ahead and ease up those restrictions because reasons. Does Rob Watson really have the hubris to want to be first, even though it's going to be being the first school in Montana to lose a student or staff member? How did we become so powerless and what can we do to protect our school and our community? Nothing is not an acceptable answer. Do we act before someone gets sick or after? Because my very great preference would be before. I know from my many conversations with my colleagues that we teachers want something to be done. So, do it. Teachers, now is the time to speak. Union, now is the time to, for action. Board, now is the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would ask to try to keep all our comments civil and so not to really direct any comments at a single person. So, with that, Hatton?
Uh, Kristy Muir, would you please unmute and make your public comment?
Hey, everybody, I'm Kristy Muir, C-H-R-I-S-T-Y-M-E-U-R-E-R. I teach second grade at Lewis and Clark. Um, gosh, we're tired of this. I thank everybody for being here and for thinking hard about it. It's a lot of work, so I just wanna give you kind of a perspective from inside the classroom. Um, things are going really well in hybrid with my kids. I have kids of all socioeconomic levels, and I can tell you without a doubt, I have assessments to prove every single one of them has made awesome progress since the year started. Um, I have some that have had to stay home sick, and that has been a factor, but the ones that I would be most worried about are doing really well, and so that's encouraging. Um, for the ones that need meal support, our Family Resource Center is delivering meals when they need to. Um, their parents are coming and picking up meals, we're monitoring that and we're on top of that, at least from my, from my experience. Um, I do wanna correct, it was said that there were no cases in children in K5, and I know that there are, there is at least one that I know of, and so I, I would wonder if there are more at other schools that are just not staff, but students as well. I guess what concerns me the most about coming back with all the kids, especially while our cases are on the rise, is that even with 10 kids in the room, it is impossible, and I mean impossible, and I am so type A, it is impossible for me to clean my hands in between touching things that they have touched. It is impossible for me to stay three feet away from a reader who's trying to read, like we have, and my face is this close to theirs, because we're both looking at the same book, and if I'm gonna teach them, I have to be that close to them. And so what concerns me is if then we're multiplying that times two, I'm touching all those other things, and again, doing the best I can to stay clean and clean everything, it's just not possible, and it concerns me greatly that we do that at a time when our cases are spiking so dramatically. Um, Ms. Farr did just tell us that the trickle-down effect from that population that is really spreading it now is likely to hit us, and I'd like, trustee Decker just spoke to, I would much rather have a plan for a few weeks out, knowing that we can continue this hybrid that does seem to be working. knowing that we can continue this hybrid that does seem to be working versus kids losing teachers left and right because we're getting sick either with COVID or with a cold. And I had a colleague that missed the whole week because she was waiting for her COVID test because she had a sore throat on Sunday. She was gone all week. And the more kids that we bring back, I fear that that's gonna happen more. And that's what will be disruptive to them, is that if I'm gone or they're getting sick from each other and they're gone, whereas the hybrid might help us by decreasing the chances of that happening. So I urge the board to change the motion and vote to wait until, um, the quarter end at least to bring us all back. Thank you so much.
Okay, it looks like next in line is Courtney. If you would unmute and make your public comment.
Yeah, thanks, guys. I appreciate the time. I just have a couple of comments. Uh, the numbers that you guys are reporting and that Cindy's reporting, I know that there is some significant delay in the numbers. I know of an entire sports team that is now in quarantine due to close contacts, but none of them have been contacted. I know that there is at least a nine or 10-day delay in contact tracing in many cases. So I'm not sure how we can be comfortable to move more kids in the classroom when the reporting and the contact tracing isn't even up to par at this point. I heard one of the board members say to trust the professionals, I want you to scroll through the seven pages of Zoom attendees and see what your professionals are telling you. There are numerous professionals that are asking you to listen to them as a teacher and what is best for them, and you are not doing that. Uh, the other thing I want to express as a parent is that I enlisted my kids in the hybrid model with the intent that my kids would be safe, um, and that we wouldn't increase that class size until we had at least two weeks of a downward trend. That's what I was promised. I didn't select the MOA because of that promise. Now you are changing that on me and I don't have an option of whether or not I can switch my kids to the MOA. That is not a service to the parents. Um, I also heard about mental health. I can tell you, um, as a mom of a sixth grader and an eighth grader, that the impact of a continued changed plan is actually going to affect their mental health far greater than if you were just consistent. I think the hybrid model is working for most, so I encourage you to keep that model. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. And I don't think we caught your last name, so if you could identify your last name for our minutes.
Yep. Last name is M. Hoff. I-M-H-O-F-F.
Thank you so much. And then Hatton?
Okay, the individual with the phone number ending in 1-5-2-7, if you would press star six to unmute and make your public comment.
Sure. Chris Lowensbury, L-O-U-N-S-B-U-R-Y. I have students at Hawthorne Elementary. I just want to emphasize to the board, I, I get that this is a really difficult decision. Um, but for parents who are working full-time, it's a really difficult decision to be sending your kids also, um, off to either City Parks and Rec, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, which are great partners in the community where they're mixing with kids from your not neighborhood school, not with the kids that they know, not with the parents that they know or the families that they know. So really, if we want to talk about vectors of spread, every time we send them out to care, it's a far greater risk for us as parents, uh, in my opinion, than it is sending them to the school where they're going to be with the same children and they actually get an education. Because right now, what's happening on remote days is they come home with packets of homework, which, you know, may or may not get done because, gosh, then we get to eat up what little family time we have. So I really support the idea of moving to the hybrid plus with four days a week so that kids actually can get the education that they want. And we can reduce the likelihood of transmission that, you know, is greatly increased by mixing with a whole bunch of kids that aren't at their school. With that, the current system, my kids who go to Hawthorne could spread if they were, you know, contagious to five or six other schools because there were kids from five or six other schools three days a week. Thanks.
Thank you, Hatton.
Uh, Ms. Palin, Angie Palin, if you would unmute and make your comment?
Hi, my name is, um, Angie Palin, A-N-G-I-E-P-A-L-I-N. I am a mom and I teach third grade at Franklin School. I encourage the board to, um, not vote for the hybrid plus plan. I encourage the board to, um, amend the plan and have us stay in hybrid plus, um, at least through the quarter, if not the semester. The COVID numbers are going up, up, up. Um, we don't want our kids to be, we don't want them injured. We don't want them sick. I agree with Kristy Muir. I, on my A-days, I have 14 kids. I keep them as far away apart as I can. Um, they're eight years old. They, it's hard. I wash my hands like you would not believe. They're chapped, they're bleeding. Um, I have to be right there with them to help them read. Um, I, there is no way I will be able to keep the 24th third graders I have socially distanced. There is no physical way in my classroom. Um, as for food insecurity kids, why don't we run a bus at noon? Send a bus at noon with food like we did this summer, um, during the school year, during the, the close down last year. Run a bus. That would work. Um, my son's a sixth grader. Yes, we have homework. Yes, we have that. We're doing it. We, we can do it. Do not change the schedule every week. Parents, teachers cannot have a schedule change every week. I cannot sit at a board meeting every week waiting to see what my work week is gonna look like next week. This is, it's irresponsible. We, we, please do not vote for this. Do not vote for this. Change it. Quarter's great, semester's better. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all your work and I appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Kim Olson, if you would unmute and make your comment?
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, um, so thank you. Um, I would like to take the time to thank Dr. Watson for acknowledging moving, that moving to hybrid plus is counterintuitive in this time of skyrocketing COVID cases in our county. Um, it is counterintuitive and that's what makes it all the more offensive, unbelievable and demoralizing as a teacher. I'd like to take this time too to thank Grace Decker and Liliana Oldperson for their consistent courage to be the minority dissenting opinion, which actually represents the majority opinion of our MCPS professionals who are actually in the classroom, who make up the majority of MCPS staff. And the fact that staff is disproportionately affected right now by COVID, um, positive tests, um, is absolutely no surprise to all of us. Um, it's shocking, um, profoundly demoralizing and offensive that our school board and administrators seem to be okay with that. Um, most of us teachers, I assume most of us are also working parents with children. So we also are very attuned to the inconveniences of this current schedule and we are also impacted by it. So, um, we, that's, you know, we, we're sympathetic to those parents who are also struggling. Um, I would encourage the board to delay, um, moving to hybrid plus until after Christmas break even. We need to do it as safest for our community, um, what's best for public health in our community. Again, we are in the midst of a global pandemic of the likes we have not seen since 100 years ago. We are not fortunate to be NHL or NBA professional sports teams that can work in a bubble and be tested every single day. Um, we must work in classrooms with lots of our, we're so happy to be back with our, our students. Um, but the hybrid schedule as it is right now is, is working. Um, I do feel safe. Um, and as you know, I spoke at the beginning of the year, I was, I had my own reservations about returning to the classroom. But if we're about to double up in just two weeks, I'm not okay with that. So I hope the school board is also prepared for, um, possibly mass teacher resignations. Um, I'm hoping too that all the participants that are tuning in right now will also raise their hands and speak their voice. We need to hear from everybody right now. Um, thank you so much.
Okay, if M.E. Ellen would unmute and make your public comment? Uh, it appears M.E. Ellen has dropped off the call. Would Tom McClintock unmute and make your public comment?
All right, M.E. Ellen is right here. Can you not hear me?
Oh, go right ahead. Sorry.
Michelle Ellen, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, last name Ellen, E-L-L-E-N. I was transferred to the Missoula Online Academy a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'm coming to as an exhausted, overworked, overwhelmed special education teacher who puts in 10 to 12 hours a day, every day, trying simply to contact her students and keep them up to date and get them engaged in learning. Your teachers in this community are doing a phenomenal job. I would challenge any one of you sitting there in that room to put in the kind of hours and effort that we are putting in to maintain an educational system. There is nothing perfect about this system. There is no perfect system anywhere at all. There's no good system anywhere at all. We are doing the best we can. And all we want is to stay safe and stay healthy, reasonably healthy, so we can continue to educate your children and ours. And the fact that the school board is overlooking the fact that staff members are getting sick, the majority of the cases percentage-wise, among how many peo-, how the percentage of students who are getting sick versus the percentage of teachers who are getting sick, it's a greater percentage of teachers who are getting sick trying to do our job. Please support us and then give us a chance to breathe. Give us a chance to work with what we know for at least a semester. Stop making us dance around and like Angie, Angie Palin so very well said, stop making us come to a board meeting every week to find out what we're gonna be teaching the next week. You're killing us, you're exhausting us and we're about to give up. Please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tom McClintock, if you would unmute and make your comment, please?
Hey, good evening. My name is Tom McClintock, M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K. Um, I too am here once again, uh, to tell the board that they need to slow down. Um, you need to listen to the professionals who aren't administrators, uh, most of whom apparently shown up this evening. Uh, and you need to remain in the hybrid education model until at least Christmas break, if not through the end of the school year. Um, there is absolutely no good reason why you would risk the safety, health and even lives of your students and your staff, your teachers, families, grandparents. Um, I said last week that, you know, if someone dies, it's on your watch. How will you feel, uh, when that first teacher passes away? Because this isn't just killing old people. Um, there have been plenty of cases, including here in Montana, where people in their 40s or 30s are dying. Um, and we've been setting new records for numbers of cases almost every day for over a week now. Uh, and of the 30-something new cases in Missoula County alone, uh, just yesterday, um, reported just yesterday, a third of them are between the ages of zero to nine or 10 to 19. Um, so that's telling me that if only four of those cases could be accounted for at the OVM, uh, good deal of them are probably connected to the school district in some way. Um, and there's a trickle-on effect. Uh, it's, it's bad for your community. Um, it's bad for your constituents. It's bad for everyone if you shove even more people into a small space, um, rather than relying on the expertise of the people who know this best, the teachers, who are many of them in this room, Zoom room tonight. Um, again, I urge you to reconsider the motion that's currently on the floor in favor of one that is, uh, slow and safe and also doesn't risk telling parents that they have to wait until a week out or even a couple of days out to know if they're supposed to change their work schedule or if they have to suddenly rearrange childcare that they dropped because they thought that they were going to be sending their kid back to school full-time Tuesday through Friday and all of a sudden cases still haven't gone down. Shocking, I know. Uh, and suddenly the school has to switch back to even phase zero because cases have gone up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hatton. I'll just let everyone know, it looks like there's at least 12 to 14 people with their hands raised.
Uh, with the individual with Ashley's iPhone, please unmute, state your full name and make your comment.
That is me. Um, my name is Ashley Hilliard, H-I-L-L-I-A-R-D. Um, I just wanted to chime in again, um, and bring up a few things, um, that may have changed from my perspective over the last week again. As I mentioned in the, in the last board meeting, I've tried to observe the nuance of these decisions right now. Um, also in the last week, my whole family and myself have been hit by a cold. And so, um, we're all, now we're playing the attendance, catch-up, homework, how do we get classwork pieces? Um, and I would again applaud all of the efforts that the teachers are making. Um, but I also would echo what trustee Decker said, that we should be focusing on how we can, um, support the teachers in making, um, their work a little bit easier. Um, there's, I, I also would echo an earlier comment that, um, a couple of months ago, as parents, we were told, you know, this, these are the conditions that we would go be moving forward and that's not being honored right now. Um, the choice to be MOA or the choice to be in-person wasn't, it wasn't really an option. Um, it was an option for those who had the means, but for everybody else, it was who, do we have somebody at home? Do we have the money? Do we have the internet? Do we have the appliance? Do we, can we make it work? Um, so I think it's important that we make, not make the assumption that, uh, families have already made that choice. They, they had to make a choice and it wasn't, it didn't feel like one. I'd also ask that you open MOA again. Um, I think that there are some parents, myself included, who are looking at this right now going, mm-mm. I would include that in your email out to your parents in the entire district and let them know that they can switch to MOA. Um, if that's an option, I think everybody needs to know that that's an option to switch to MOA. Um, and again, um, I know that this is tricky. Um, I really appreciate, um, trustee Decker, trustee Oldperson, um, looking at all the pieces here, the moving parts, um, that this is not an easy decision. We don't expect this to be an easy decision. Um, and I also think we should honor the professional experience of the parents, um, just as much as we're honoring the professional experience of the teachers, just as much as we're honoring the experience of our board members. Um, we, I would really like to see us move together, together. Um, it's really disheartening to see the community continue to be divided through the schools right now. Um, I, I really would like to see something come forward that we can move forward with together. I, I just don't think we have to be divided like this. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Tricia Owens, if you would please unmute and make your comment?
Uh, my name is Tricia Owens, T-R-I-C-I-A-O-W-E-N-S. And I am a second grade teacher at Lowell. Um, I would just love, I, um, heard people saying that we shouldn't second-guess the experts or our administrators and I would ask that you not second-guess us as teachers. We are the ones that are in the building every single day with the students, every single day. It is not the administrators. Um, I haven't seen an administrator in my building from the ad building, um, that I know of in my classroom except one time, I believe, since the year has started. Um, Um, I haven't been asked for my feedback from, um, an administrator at the ad building except for this summer. Um, so I think it's important that you listen to the teachers that are there every day and are doing this every day and that are working around asymptomatic kiddos. And we're going to be the ones that get it because they're carriers of it. Um, the other thing that I think you need to keep in mind is that, yes, this needs to be a data-driven process. Everything that we do in school is data-driven. But we've also said there's some other issues such as a lack of staff. I know that we are short four para-professionals at our school and two lunch duties. That has not been addressed, but we're still going to bring back all of these kids, which means now I'm probably not going to get a lunch hour or not an hour, thirty minutes. Um, we're, we're short subs, subs because we're out sick. We have one in-building sub, and if that, if that person has to cover one room, then the next people to cover are the specialists that decide, so our music teacher or our P E teacher, which then I don't get my one twenty-minute prep. The only time I have to use the restroom or anything else that day. And then today, I'm getting new students, which we continue to get new students from MOA and anywhere, and I need curriculum. Well, we sent all of our extra curriculum to the MOA. And I was told by curriculum instruction to just send my math book, which is copyrighted, and have the three hundred-page math book copied for the three new students that I'm getting. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to break the law. I'm not going to have the folks at the print shop break the law. And my new students deserve the same materials that the other students in my class have. If we can't provide the students in our classrooms with the same materials, what's going to happen when all these students start coming back and need books and need new books? Because we sent all of those to MO, MOA, which they deserve books too. So I just want you to keep those things in mind. Thank you.
Thanks. And I just counted again. It looks like twenty-one or twenty more. Two, two people have their hands up. So we might not be calling you in the order in which you raised your hands because it, that was a little hard to identify.
Oh, actually, I can verify that Zoom places them in that order, so I'm just going in that order. Uh, the next up is Shannon Judge.
Hi. Sorry, I couldn't unmute. My name is Shannon Judge, S H A N N O N J U D G E. And I am a second-grade teacher at Russell. And I would again first like to start by inviting any board member or upper administration official to come visit my classroom, especially tomorrow when I have my ten energetic, awesome, loving, excited second graders who are there. Um, and we've had a lot of successes. I again would like to start with that. With my small groups, I can make connections that I haven't been able to make before with my students. I can keep making sure that we're washing and sanitizing our hands as often as we can. Again, I'd like to echo that my students are sanitizing and washing, but for me, it's very hard to sanitize in between every student. Um, we can follow those social distancing guidelines almost with three feet separation, but when I add ten more students and seven, seventeen is impossible to distance. Um, I would also like to say that while there are not cases in the elementary schools, when I have a student who is in close contact, they could potentially miss three weeks of school. And, um, how do we catch our kids up when they're missing three weeks of school? We're trying everything we can to provide them with materials, but when they're out for three weeks, then I have my other students who I'm trying to teach, but I'm also trying to catch up everyone else, and that is extremely stressful. I would also like to speak for my special ed staff and my paras especially, um, and the specialists, when we're asking them to interact with so many different students and so many different teachers, treating them as professionals, I worry so much more about my para than I do myself because she goes to so many people, and she is, and if I lose her, I won't survive. My sanity will not be there. Um, I would also like to say, are we being fair to parents when we're making these decisions on a weekly basis? And are we being fair to those teachers who are also parents, who are trying to make child decisions for themselves while also keeping their students at the forefront of their mind? With cold and flu season coming up and the symptoms being so closely related, how can we for sure know that students are not going to be missing more and more school? And we already have sub shortages now when we're only missing, um, one or two teachers. We're continuing to have teachers get sick and we can't fill the subs, and then subs are traveling to different buildings. Um, I'd also like to say that with twenty kids in my classroom eating lunch for thirty minutes with their masks off, how are those virus, virons not spreading to all of the other students when they're talking and laughing and talking across the room, so they're projecting their voices? Um, I would just like to say that it is extremely stressful for teachers already to manage these guidelines with limited numbers. And I would just like you to reconsider moving forward with phase two and stick in hybrid at least until the end of the trimester so that we can continue to keep our staff and our students safe, and we can at least have our kids in the building for two days instead of them having to miss four days or three weeks if they have to quarantine. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
Okay, the next is Julie Gilbertson Day. If you would unmute and make your comment.
Thank you for giving me the chance to comment. Um, first, I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Watson for following through on their commitment to revisit the decision, um, especially given the recent uptake in our cases in our community. And just a huge thank you to our teachers for the phenomenal job you're doing. Board members, honestly, I don't care if you listen to me as a parent or a community member, listen to your teachers. They have so much to say about what's going to happen in these, in these classrooms if you bring all students back every day. Listen to them, please. I'll finish with the rest of my comments, though. The statistics show to spread in the community, to me does not mean we should change what we're doing. That suggests we should stay where we're at because we should anticipate that cases are going to continue increasing. There's no reason to think they're not going to at this point when our transmission value or R factor is so high. Bringing together all students all days by definition will change the protocols in these grades, and we don't know what to expect when that happens. It absolutely seems counterintuitive to suggest that this is a reason to change course, that there's no cases in K through eight. As a working parent with two children in the K through eight cohort, we appreciate the importance of in-person learning in our household and the need to have a plan in place. But I'd like the board to consider whether it's prudent to bring all students back in just two weeks, given the current trends. And also, we shouldn't have to keep changing plans every couple of weeks. This is draining families, teachers, everybody. Please listen to us. As, um, I'd also like to echo what a previous commenter said, that when we enrolled our students in the hybrid model, we were told that movement between phases would be based on a decline in cases. That's not happening right now. Please not move forward with the hybrid plus model. I don't want to say this, but it is what we will do, that our, our children will be leaving M C P S if you return to the hybrid plus model under the current trend in increased cases. Please don't make us do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Carleen Hathaway. Please unmute and make your public comment.
Hello, my name is Carleen Hathaway, H A T H A W A Y. I'm a para educator in the structured learning program at C S Porter. I'm also an officer and M M C E O, the Support Staff Union. Good evening, M C P S board, Rob, administrators in attendance. I'm really glad to see that M C P S continues to take the necessary precautions to keep board members safe by holding Zoom meetings. And thanks to those in attendance in person at the bill, the business building, sitting safely six or more feet apart in a virtually empty room. As a para educator in M C P S for over thirty years, I've been through a lot of difficult and stressful situations, not only in the classroom, but in working with administration, bargaining contracts, and looking out for my members. But I'll say that this pandemic beats everything I have ever seen and been through so far. I've already addressed the board for tonight's meeting with the email sent earlier this week, so I'm not going to repeat what's in my letter. What I'm going to ask you to do now, though, is vote against the motion that's currently on the floor and consider that we should maintain our current schedule and phase in hybrid form minimally through the end of this quarter, even better through the end of the semester, until cases in Missoula County begin to decline in a visible trend, until we have a viable and cohesive plan of when and how we can safely phase back in and when we have sufficient staff in all areas, from teaching to custodial to food service and so on. Please remember that the lasting effects of COVID nineteen on the body are horrendous. The expense of dealing with it can be catastrophic, and the mental, emotional effects of it are life-changing. These are students and staff members' lives that we're dealing with right now. We can't, we can't continue. Um, I'm hearing someone talking over me. We can continue in the phase we're currently in. We can continue to educate because our teachers and our staff members are the professionals. They are the ones in the classrooms, working with these students. Please give us a chance to be part of the solution in Missoula County, not put us in a position to exacerbate this unbelievable problem. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Casey Ballou, could you please unmute and make your public comment?
Hello, Casey Ballou, K A capital C, two small e's, B A L L O U. I feel like we all get to spell our names today. I should do that, too. I am a middle school teacher by trade, um, proudly serving as the Missoula Education Association president, representing over seven hundred teachers. Um, and I will tell you that there is a split within our ranks. We definitely talk about, you know, what the difference is between safe and easy, and we need to make sure that both happen. I've heard this compared to a race, and I've been very guilty of this as well, telling you to, it's almost like a broken record, to be the tortoise, not the hare, right? Because the one thing that we do agree on within our ranks is that we want some consistency, that we definitely want, you know, a slow, safe approach, and that, you know, we have a need to have a plan to backtrack quickly. Cindy Far advocated for it in our last meeting, and we have other double A's that I've talked to this week who are looking at trying to go from all in-person learning to a hybrid model, and they're asking what we're doing that's working and what we're doing that's not. Once we make a change, I know that we lose much of our ability to backtrack, especially without a plan to do so. We lose the community partners who've been providing the childcare that allow many of our staff to teach in person in the hybrid model. We lose our ability to maintain distance in our classrooms and maintain protocols that ensure our students and staff are as safe as possible. We have lots of wins going on in our classrooms right now, too, like you've heard from our awesome professional educators. We're able to make great connections with students that are small enough in numbers, big enough in time, that we can get to them multiple times in a class period. We have students that are able to do all the parts of a science lab in middle school on their own. We have the time and intensive blocks to give students individual attention, cutting down on the discipline issues in our classrooms, and that's a huge one for middle school teachers. Although our teachers and parents need things to get easier, safety must be first and foremost in our considerations. When we say that we stay for a chunk of time in this current model, we actually gain the ability to do some problem-solving because we're not trying to figure out what's coming next. We know, and we can start to plan better for it. So I encourage you to vote down this current motion and instead put forth a motion to stay the course until at least the end of the quarter in hybrid and until we have a decrease in case counts, adequate staffing in buildings, and a solid plan to phase back. That's the best choice for our students, our staff, and our community at this point in time. This isn't a race. It's a pandemic, and no one wins a pandemic. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sarah Lee, if you could unmute and make your comment, please.
Hi, Sarah Lee, S A R A H L E E, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Rattlesnake, and I would just like to echo what I've heard from a lot of other teachers, that I would love to have time to plan, so I would recommend waiting till at least the quarter, if not after winter break. Um, I just have a short story of like a specific example. Last week, my son's preschool shut down temporarily due to COVID. Um, and so I was called out to school in the middle of the day. I had to, um, try and find somebody to cover my class. Our substitute teacher, which we're lucky enough to have with, that not all schools have yet, um, was already in someone else's room. My specialist, who should have been covering, was also unavailable. So I had a random para cover for a while until, um, she had to go somewhere else, and then my students had to go next door to another fifth-grade classroom, which was fine, I guess. It's only ten kids. It worked. But now those two classes have mixed, which seems unsafe. But what would we do if I had twenty-two or twenty-four kids? We're not going to put fifty kids together in a classroom. Who would watch my students? Do we just leave them unattended? We don't have the staff to, to support this model yet. We need to hire more people. Um, I know that, uh, something on the agenda tonight, so maybe I should have, I should zoom back in, is that there's possibly new care options for students, like the Y M C eight Mount Jumbo. Let's try some of these other options that are out there before we change our model. Let's give this a chance. I feel like we're in the swing of things now. We know what we're doing. We're doing our very best work, so I would love to wait, have a little bit more time to do my best in hybrid. And, um, thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Nicholas Shepherd, or excuse me, Lisa J, if you would unmute and make your comment.
Hi, my name is, um, Lisa, L A S A, Gunther, G U E N T H E R. I have twenty-plus years' experience of teaching, and I am a para in the resource K through two at Hawthorne Elementary. I would first like to thank the board for their service. I chose to go in-person with a promise from the administration and the board to remain in a hybrid situation with response to positivity rate and overall cases of downtrend, downtrending. I have comorbidity. I have been diagnosed with cancer. I'm on my third cancer. I have surgery scheduled for December. I also have asthma and high blood pressure. So my decision to go into the schools and work with the students as a para was made with that determination by the administration and the board members. For you now to backtrack and say we are going to push more students into the classroom increases my risk of contracting COVID to dangerous levels. I am scheduled for surgery in December. I put it off from the spring when COVID hit. I chose to go into the schools because the students need my experience and the knowledge that I bring to K through two. I would hope that you will honor your original determination with response to positivity rate and an overall case of downtrending. It is impossible to physical distance in a kindergarten, first-grade classroom with more than what we have now. Masks, I'm constantly reminding them to put them up. They slide down from their nose to their mouth, and they're also ill-fitting for students. Some people can't afford to buy self-made masks. Why can't we investigate hotspots for students without access or equipment? And food delivery, as we did in the spring for those who, um, we worry about food. We have staff shortages. We did last year. We have every single year. This year, it's even more compounded because I know many, many, many subs who just are not going to put themselves into this situation. They're older like I am and also may have comorbidity. Um, extra cleaning, I haven't witnessed any, any extra cleaning um, in the classrooms that I'm in, and that is crucial for the success to continue. By asking kindergarten teachers to implement extra cleaning, even first-grade teachers, I would I would love to see the board and the administration come in and see what is involved, even high school teachers and middle school teachers. The suggestion that we have children help is ridiculous. This is a nationwide, global situation. It is not local, and it is not statewide, so it isn't a race. Let's take safety first. On a positive note, the smaller group size has provided me the opportunity for more individualized instruction for every single student that I work with. Moving, with that said, I would like to recommend that the board vote against the motion on the floor, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, Nicholas Shepherd, if you would please unmute and make your comment?
Yes, name's Nick Shepherd, last name spelled S-H-E-P-H-E-R-D. And I'd just like to thank the board for a meeting on a Thursday. Number one, thanks for taking the time out to do that, and thank you, Dr. Watson, for your leadership in the district. I want to first talk as a parent, and to the teachers out there, thank you so much for the work that you are doing for the kids that you do have in class. But what I'd be remiss to also say that my kids need more. My kids need more support, more, excuse me, more encouragement, and teachers to push them, and that's difficult to do in the hybrid model. And I'd like to also now take a time to speak as a professional teacher. I do teach at CS Porter, but what I'm going to say is drastically different than what you've heard from a couple of my colleagues. No one is questioning our professionalism as teachers here, and I've seen some signs out there saying that teachers are professionals, too, that I am not getting that at all. We are professionals in education. Listen to what we have to say and how to manage the classroom. But what most of us, and I'm speaking for myself and assuming for most, we are not professionals in healthcare. We should listen to those professionals in healthcare, like Ms. Farr, who has come on and given us Missoula County. Last board meeting, there was a family, or a pediatrician from Missoula that spoke. The professionals we should listen to about what is happening in healthcare are the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Montana Academy of Pediatrics, the local pediatricians and docs who spoke, and one member spoke at the last board meeting. My wife is one of those physicians, and they overwhelmingly say that it is more important for the overall health of kids to be in school. They have weighed the possibility of COVID, but the overall health is for students to be in school. And there are teachers that are in the district that I don't think our voice is being heard, that we are anxious and waiting and hoping that we can get kids in school on an everyday basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Belcourt, if you would please unmute and make your comment?
Hi, my name is Annie Belcourt, B-E-L-C-O-U-R-T, and I wanted to thank everyone for your time and for, you know, these thoughtful, difficult discussions. I am a faculty member in pharmacy and public health, and I also teach, and I wanted to, you know, just make a statement briefly in solidarity with many of the teachers who have spoken tonight, and also for the community and as a parent. So for the community, I'd like to say, you know, media reports are showing that we are nearing capacity at our ICU in Missoula area and some of our hospitals. So this is a larger issue than the school district. We have people who are dying. There's no treatment, there's no vaccine right now. Regardless of the trends, which are alarming, we have to think about human life, and we have to think about the importance of that. I don't think we are at a place where we can make a definitive decision, and so therefore I do agree that a slower pace is important. I want to commend trustee Old Person and Decker for voicing dissent, because I feel that that's a voice of reason right now. Where I'm from, and the Blackstreet Reservation, we have an extreme spike happening right now. There are over 227 cases in the county, and we're a much smaller county there. Here in Missoula, you know, there's over 200, but we have a much larger population. But the fact remains is that we have people who are very much at risk, people on this call who are very much at risk, and educators who don't appear to be listened to. And if people had entered into the agreement of having, you know, no changes occur until the trend reverses or decreases, I think is something that we need to think about very seriously. And the ethics of this as regard to, you know, our medical practices as well, and what our systems of care can help handle at the moment. And it would be great to hear from medical professionals on this, on this topic as well. I don't think there's agreement universally that this is a good time to move forward. And I want to thank you all for your time, and just to recommend that you take some time and hopefully put this forward till the quarter or semester. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty Williams, if you'd unmute and make your public comment?
Excuse me, did you say Ty Williams?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ty Williams. I'm an extended resource K-2 teacher at Hawthorne Elementary School and the parent of an eighth grade MOA student. In my role as special education teacher, I serve a student who is in a regular ed first-grade class. Out of approximately seven to eight students in the classroom, three of the students do not wear masks over their nose regularly. Of those, two rarely have their noses covered. It's not because their teacher doesn't try to keep them masked. She tries, but she has to teach, and she can't teach when she's constantly assisting students in covering their noses. We can currently keep the students safe with social distancing of six feet. We can't do that if all students return and with a social distance of three feet. I ask that you remain in hybrid until our cases of COVID in Missoula are on a steady decline. I don't ask this because I don't support hybrid plus where it's appropriate. I teach extended resource. We have our students four days a week. For this population and the number of students we have in our class, hybrid plus is appropriate. Would you sit three feet away from someone with their nose out of their mask? Would you be cool with your child sitting three feet away from someone with their nose out of their mask? If so, I ask that half of you, please, place your nose, your mask below your noses and move within three feet of one another. Show us you think it's safe. Do what you're asking us to do. I can tell you, it's not safe. I know. You know how I know? Because today, I got sneezed on when I was in, within three feet of one of my students. This is just one area of concern when it comes to the time moving, of moving to hybrid plus. There are others. I ask you to vote against the motion before you tonight. Stay in hybrid through the end of the semester or until our cases of COVID are on a steady decline. My grandfather always told me that my word means something. Your word means something. I want to give a shout-out to trustees Old Person and Decker. I so appreciate you standing for our community and for the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jane Doherty, if you would unmute and make your comment, please?
Hi, thank you very much to everybody for these really thought-provoking comments on both sides. I wanted to say three things, and I'm trying to be concise. The first is that, to the point earlier, that it seems counter-instinctive to go back when the numbers are on the increase, and the argument in favor of doing that is because the cases are largely among people who are in their twenties. I would argue that many of those people are gathered in larger groups, because they've returned to college and are playing sports and are gathering together, which is exactly what will happen if I'm expected to put my two groups of second graders at Paxton into one classroom four days a week. That's the first concern. The second concern is that if and when, well, I think, I'm assuming it's going to be when we do move to that second phase, it's not the sort of thing that I can discover on a Thursday in order to prepare for the following Tuesday, because it's literally a question of bringing 10 more desks and chairs into my classroom, and then figuring out how I'm going to do every single aspect of my classroom and how I'm going to space everything out in the safest way possible. So I ask that when we do make the shift, that there be some accounting for teacher time, both to rearrange our classrooms and figure out all of our routines and procedures, but also to be given time to actually support our students in figuring out this new system, because it's going to be a completely different world than the one they've been used to, and which has been working beautifully, as far as I can tell. The final thing I'd like to say is, on behalf of long-term subs who are bravely working in our buildings, many of them earning something like $11 an hour, and all of them working without healthcare coverage, health insurance. So I, while this isn't on the table this evening, I really urge, as a district, for us to consider how we are protecting the people who are literally putting their lives on the line to be in our schools with no health insurance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Tracy Hardy, if you would unmute and make your comment?
Hi, I'm Tracy Hardy. I teach special education at Durant Rankin Elementary School. I am also a parent of seven children in the school district. I would encourage the-
Ms. Hardy, we can't hear you.
I encourage the board to not vote for the motion on the table and look at extending the current model through at least the trimester, the semester, if not longer, based on the numbers going down rather than up. I think it's impossible to believe that bringing children back into the classroom is not going to continue to exacerbate the rising COVID cases. And I'd also like to invite any board member to come into our school. I haven't seen anybody, any upper administration or any board members visiting our schools right now. Come see the children with masks sliding down their face. Help put the masks back on the five-year-olds who can't do it themselves, and envision what the classrooms will look like with double the numbers. Thank you for your time.
Bronwyn Troughtman, if you would please state your full name and make your public comment?
Hello, this is Bronwyn Troutman, B-R-O-N-W-Y-N-T-R-O-U-T-M-A-N, and I'm here as a parent of a junior at Hellgate High School. She is participating in the hybrid model, and she is doing really well. She is thriving. I know that's not the case for everyone. I just want to thank all the teachers for being here and offering their expertise and for speaking up for what they believe is right. I hope that the board will vote against the motion on the floor and keep it in hybrid. I would love to see it in hybrid until the end of the year, or at least until the cases decrease, as was, as we were told as parents, teachers. I also want to acknowledge the para educators and other school staffs that are sacrificing a lot right now, putting themselves at risk. Yeah, so please, and I want to thank trustees Old Person and Decker for their insight and their comments, and I hope that you guys will listen to the teachers who are really risking a lot and sacrificing a lot, even more than ever during this time. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Kim Butler, if you would please unmute and make your public comment?
Hi, I'm Kim Butler, K-I-M-B-U-T-L-E-R. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Porter Middle, not Porter, my first year is at Porter, I'm at Meadow Hill. I have 28 years in with the district. I do have to say, first off, thank you to the board and to Dr. Watson. These are not easy decisions. You've done a lot of thinking, a lot of planning, and a lot of reevaluating the data as we go, and I very much appreciate that. I was really good with the plan to start the hybrid plus. I was totally on board until our cases spiked and have really gone through the roof. I am not comfortable at all now with the hybrid plus plan. I would really urge us to stay in the current hybrid plan, at least till the end of the quarter, preferably to the end of semester. The constant changing of plans makes it very difficult to plan, to plan for our remote time, to plan for the in-class time. I do have to also say, I loved having my students in my room. I feel like I'm getting to know them, making good connections. We're safe. Bottom line, I feel that we're safe right now. I think it's essential that we do not approve the plan that's up. It's essential that we keep our students, our staff, and our community safe, and the only way to do that is to stay where we are, not to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Langella, if you would unmute and make your comment?
Hi, my name's Lisa Langella, L-I-S-A-L-A-N-G-E-L-L-A, and I'm here as both a teacher and a parent. I'm teaching in the hybrid model right now. I have the honor of taking care of people's tiny little treasures that are only six or seven years old right now, and I take that job very seriously. I was worried to come back in the hybrid model when it started, and it turns out I was wrong. It was, it's working out really well. I was wrong in some ways. There's definitely always the challenge that, I've had two kids this week sneeze, and first they take their mask off and then they sneeze, and then they put their mask back on. So that's, that was a surprise, and on two different cohorts, so each cohort has heard me say, "That's not the way to do it." So right now, I've got very small numbers. I read with every first grader every day, and that's never happened in my life, and I've only taught first grade for 15 years. I get to read with each one of my kids who are in person every day. I've seen so much growth in this short amount of time. The kids are joyful, and they're happy to be here, and I really would love nothing more than to have them there all, every day of the week, like we usually do. But the terror that I think, like, I cannot monitor that many children to stop them from sneezing and taking off their mask. I won't even see it if I have a full group of kids. Like, I won't even be able to use it as a teaching moment. I can't look in all those directions at once. I just feel like someone earlier, one of the board members, was asking for more data about, you know, is this working or is this not working? And teachers are the ones who have the data right now. I've got my testing I just finished, I've got the reading levels of my kids, I've seen how they've learned more sight words, like, from one week to the next. I can't even believe they're learning it that fast. The kids who are in school right now, hybrid, we only have them two days a week, they're learning a lot. And I agree that whatever we're sending home is, I mean, I don't expect parents to be able to do as much in a day as I do. I know they want to and would if they could. But those two days are very valuable, and the kids are safe, and I feel safe, and that is number one on the list right now. And they're learning more this year with the short amount of time that we have together than they did last year when we sent them all home and tried to teach on the computer with no training. My daughter, my own daughter's in third grade, she's in the MOA right now, and I don't think she's learning more with her five days of MOA. So I just, I don't agree with the comment that the kids will learn more and better if we go back to four days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaclyn Vosler, if you would unmute and make your public comment, please, and spell your name?
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Vosler, it's J-A-C-L-Y-N-Vosler, I apologize, my notes are kind of messy. Thank you for giving us a chance to be here and to talk and listen. I just want to say, you've heard teachers say it, this is hard. A lot of us are putting in 70 hours a week. I go to bed at 11:00. After working, I get up at 6:00 to go into school. This is not easy. We've lost our lunch, we're not going to the bathroom. It's not easy. So people are, we're tired, but we're doing it because we love kids, right? We signed a contract before we knew what we were getting into. My own father, who's a retired doctor, asked me to take a year off, and I said no because of equity. There are kids that have to be in the building, there are teachers who have to be in the building. This is what I believe in, this is what I do, so I came. I do want to say, though, that, like people are saying, these small groups, this is what we dream of in education, right? We're racing to get back to the system that is falling apart and that we know isn't working the way we want it to, and we're racing to get back to normal, instead of taking the best of what's happening and reimagining what we can do and doing something better, and making, making plans during this time to not just go back to- not just go back to what we were doing. These small groups are giving kids tons of growth in two days a week. We're making relationships. We're hearing voices we haven't heard before. We're getting kids that, I mean, the, the things that I'm seeing, while this is never what I would choose, um, this is closer to what I want for my students and for myself as an educator, to learn together. Um, I think it's also important, we talk about kids and equity, there are kids who have to be in the building. That's absolutely true. And so the decisions we make, um, they're going to have to go along with those. And so we have to be really thoughtful in what parents and kids are walking into, our decisions, those do affect some of the most vulnerable students and some of those vulnerable families who don't have a choice to pull their kids out to, you know, to do MOA. And so I think that this has to be really thoughtful. Um, I am, I'm begging you, I want to stay in school. I want to be with my kids. I don't want to go back to doing, you know, everything on the computer. And if we don't move slowly and thoughtfully and intentionally, that's what we risk. And I can do more in two days a week than I can do in a full quarter of giant classes. But if my kids go back online, I mean, that's, that's going to be really hard for everybody. Um, you know, table dividers, my kid's papers don't have all the germs. They're in their faces. They're sitting together a foot and a half apart at a table, the table divider. That's not going to keep them safe. Um, I guess, sorry, I'm, I'm rambling a little bit, but I think I'm just going to say, we have a chance to do things better. We have a chance to plan for worst case scenario. We have a chance for, for taking the good things right now and expanding on them. Uh, we have a chance to protect each other and to make our teachers feel seen and heard and respected. Um, please help us stay in school. If kids are getting colds and flus and it's spreading because they're all together, every kid that sneezes goes home or coughs goes home. They're missing a lot of school, whether they have COVID or not, you know, they're, we just, I just want you to help us stay in the building. I love my kids. I miss them when they're not there. I want them with us all year as long as we can do this. And thank you for your consideration. Everyone made this look easy. It's hard. I'm sorry I rambled, but thank you for your time um and for listening to our thoughts.
Thank you.
Dorothy Morrison, if you would unmute and make your public comment?
Here I am. Thank you so much for giving us this moment to us express our opinions about these important decisions. As a person who usually has a lot of ideas when asked to brainstorm, I was completely brain dead when it came to how to solve getting back into school. So I'm happy to say that this hybrid model is wonderful, is working well. And as so many of our colleagues have already said, I'm at the elementary level. Um, the, the students are feeling a sense of security and joy and the learning is profound. It's much deeper in two days than it is in five days when you have so many students. Um, I should mention I'm also a music specialist, so I'm pushing into classrooms. I go in to one grade level for uh three weeks and then I switch grade levels, which means I'm being exposed to two to three times the number of students than the average classroom teacher. But I accept that. We've always been exposed. Normally I am teaching the entire school, so this is a much smaller group. But that, that does weigh into my thinking about what it would be like to have to face full classrooms of students and the number of students I'm exposed to. And now I'm going to use a not very profound metaphor, but the CDC has told us we should wear masks, we should wash our hands, and we should social distance. That's our three-legged stool. That's what my kids were sitting on at lunch today. Their three-legged stool. If we take away one of those legs, the stool just does not hold the kid. It just does not. And it certainly does not hold the teachers. And now I'm especially worried. Um, I've been also a lunch monitor in these interesting times, which has been interesting. And um, we've been going outside, but it's going to get colder and we're going to have to go inside. And as we go inside, we're going to close all the windows and all that air is just going to circulate. And if there's more people in that amount of air, there's just more of those aerosols that we all know are not good for us. So um, thank you for listening and I do hope you pay attention to the, the, the commitment to teaching these children, but the concern for the public health. Thanks.
Chair Holland, I just have a process question. Um, the next person in line has already made public comment once tonight. Um, should I wait till everybody gets through and then call on those people a second time?
Sure. I would ask everyone to try to make one public comment and at most two, but we would like to hear from new people first before we allow additional public comment.
Okay, with that, Jill Taber, would you please unmute and make your public comment? Jill Taber, if you would please unmute to make your public comment?
Hi, I'm here, sorry. Um, Jill Taber, J-I-L-L-T-A-B-E-R. Thanks for doing all of this listening. I appreciate it. Um, I'm a mom of a second grader at Lewis and Clark. Um, I'll start by saying teachers, admins, I don't want your job. Um, I know that this time has been really hard and I appreciate the efforts um that are being made at all levels um to try to make this work. Um, but I will also say that um, while I listen to the concerns of teachers, I also just want to express that like, parents have been doing this since March too. And this has become really challenging. It's emotionally taxing. It's physically taxing. It's scary to wonder when this all ends and how this affects our kids. And that's hard too. And I'm seeing my kid at home. Um, he used to love school and I see that joy for going to school diminishing, that enthusiasm diminishing this year. And that's really hard to see. Um, kids are often the last people on the list. They've often been the last people on the list when we've been making decisions regarding COVID. Um, what happens to the well-being of our community if we have scores of kids falling behind academically? How is that good for the health of our community? I support hybrid plus. I'd do it tomorrow if you, if it was an option. I'd send my kid to school five days a week tomorrow if it was an option. Our kids need to be in school. Um, we talk a lot about problem solving and I know that there has been, I mean, I think of the logistics of what has had to be done to get us to this point and it blows my mind. But if we're going to problem solve, let's problem solve. If we need more staff, like let's figure out how to hire it. If we need more subs, let's figure out how to find them. Um, if people are uncomfortable being in-person school, open up the online option for them if it's not already option, an, an option. I just, I want to see us be thinking about how this is affecting our kids long-term. And I, and I'm not just talking about whether they're safe from COVID or not. Um, I support going to online school. I um, I guess if you're going to vote on the motion to extend it a week, that's fine, but um, we need to get our kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheri Postma, if you please unmute and make your comment?
Hi, this is Sheri Postma, S-H-E-R-I-P-O-S-T-M-A. And um, I have been an employee with the district for thirty-three years now. And I am also the president of MMCEO, um, the Classified Staff Union. Um, this has been an extremely difficult time for every one of us. I, I don't even know where to go at times. I'm, I'm frustrated. I hear from um our members day in, day out. I know Carleen Hathaway, who is our secretary, she hears constantly. Um, we have paras who truly are feeling squeezed and, and they don't know what to do at times. And um, and maybe not getting the information that they need and kind of feeling out of sorts. We have custodial staff that feel that they don't have enough um help. And, and I, I realize, I think that's with, of course, all staff. We don't have enough help. And I know we're trying to hire folks, um, but when we're just saying we're going to hire you until December thirty-first, I don't think we're going to get too many people raising their hand or coming forward really wanting to do some of this. So I think this is putting it as a huge disadvantage. And um, I just can't imagine myself being out right now in the buildings um with, you know, lots of children, lots of people. Um, i-if they all are going to be coming back. I'm lucky. I'm down in an office. I'm semi by myself. I can't imagine being out in this. Um, and so I just would hope that you will think about the staff. I think about the children every single day, absolutely. But please start thinking about the staff. And some of us are getting older. Some of us have people at home that uh would be in great danger if we did come down with this. Um, so I, I just would hope that you would think to hold back just a bit, really take the numbers and help us with all this. And um, let's maybe stay this way, at least until, say Thanksgiving even. I'm, you know, just trying to think positively here that maybe something will come about around then, hopefully. So I thank you for your time. I thank you, board. I thank you administration. And of course, all of wonderful teachers and staff. Thank you.
Okay, Melanie Charleston, if you'd please unmute and make your comment?
Good evening. This is Melanie Charleston, M-E-L-A-N-I-E-C-H-A-R-L-S-O-N. I am a field consultant for the Montana Federation of Public Employees and I work with both of your unions, Missoula Education Association and the MMCEO. I am also a retired teacher out of MCPS after serving your district for twenty-eight years. Currently, I work with roughly twenty-five locals from Darby all the way through to Kalispell. Each of these locals is approaching this in a unique, different manner, but the one piece above all that I'm hearing is let's keep everyone safe. The Missoula EA and MMCEO have drafted a um, a, a, a piece of art that you're seeing on numerous folks' displays this evening on Zoom of safe, slow, and sustainable. That is incredibly reasonable. And you're hearing a great deal of options tonight so that everyone, everyone can remain safe with a slow and sustainable approach to moving through this pandemic. Your staff, I believe, is your greatest resource. And it's our task to make sure that they are safe so they can continue education in any form in this community. So I want you to really consider how we are keeping all safe. And also consider that um, I'm hearing through many comments tonight that these small class sizes are working. The hybrid model is working. Uh, I, I hear all that teacher joy coming through tonight um and being able to really dig deep into the curriculum and see growth with those students in the hybrid model. That's fabulous. A small class size is something educators have been dreaming with for years and we have that. I think it would be very prudent of this board to take some suggestions given this evening, to remain in hybrid at least through the quarter and at best through the semester. I would encourage you to consider that model. Board, I know these are incredibly challenging times and you are a volunteer board and uh we appreciate you listening. Please take these comments to heart. Your staff is tired. They are working continually and they need your support. And this would be a way to give that to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Doug Rosberg, if you would please unmute and make your public comment?
Hi there, Doug Rosberg, R-O-S-S-B-E-R-G. Um, I am a second grade teacher at Chief Arlo Elementary. And I just wanted to get on really briefly to also share some data perspective of how the hybrid model has been effective thus far this year. Um, in K5, every year we begin using ERLA, the Independent Reading Level Assessment Tool, to determine student um reading levels at the beginning of the fall. Um, one thing that's cool about this tool is anybody who's been in MCPS before, you can look at prior years where they left off. And of my second graders, one hundred percent of them at this moment are either at or have gained from the level that they were when they left our schools in March. I'm already seeing dramatic increases in sight words and fluency and comprehension with just, I think officially today was day number twenty-one when we were doing our count, which means I've had the kids either ten or eleven days and we are already seeing substantial growth. I have no doubt that part of that is the result of my ability to read individually with every one of those students every day. We're also seeing great response on CSO. I'm seeing on Monday, the assignment that I posted, I had over ninety percent of my students respond to that post on CSO successfully. And I know that that will only grow and get better as we continue to learn the program and understand those expectations. I think that what we're doing right now is safe. I think that what we, we've seen zero student keys to cases in K8 for a reason because this has been effective. I don't feel like it will continue to stay that way if we choose to move forward swiftly. Um, please consider holding on for the quarter and maintaining the hybrid model until the ninth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Johnson, if you'd please unmute and make your public comment?
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I am a parent who had, has opted out to put my daughter in Missoula County Public Schools. I don't like this decision that I've had to make this year. I want my daughter to return to school. Um, cases are spiking in Missoula. No one in Missoula seems to care too much anymore about social distancing, being safe when they're out. Um, businesses are still required to try to maintain that, but Missoula is getting tired of it. And I ask you, Missoula, parents, teachers, and everyone to please persevere through this time. So my daughter can eventually go back to school with your children as well. If we screw this up, we will be remembered for a very long time for screwing this up. So vote the right way and do not go back to a hybrid plus until at least 2021. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica Martin, if you'd please unmute and make your comment?
Hello, um, my name is Erica Martin. I am a teacher at Central High School. I am, um, oh, I'm sorry. I've been in the district for almost ten years and this is by far the hardest year I've experienced as a teacher. Um, you know, I'm putting a lot of time into my online classes. I'm putting a lot in time and effort into my in-person classes. And like, just to be frank, it sucks. But it's been awesome to see the kids. It's been wonderful to feel like we are being semi-safe or safe considering the circumstances. And I would do it for the next three years if it meant that I could keep myself and my family healthy. The idea of twenty-plus kids in my room is horrifying to me. Um, it gives me so much anxiety that I've considered what else I could do, like in terms of a career. And I know I'm not the only one. I've had lots of friends and colleagues make the same comment. Um, and I think part of it is concern for our health and part of it is concern that our employer perhaps doesn't put our health as their number one concern. Um, from the people that have um spoke in favor of reopening or going to this hybrid plus plan, I've heard a lot of ifs. So um, I've thought about those too. And I think, you know, if we had adequate testing in Missoula County, which we don't right now, right now a COVID test is taking anywhere from two to five days to return, which means a teacher that has symptoms like my colleague does right now, has to wait and quarantine from her family until she can get that test result back. And that means subplans. Um, and that means like a life completely upended. Um, and she's been doing all the right things. Um, if we had adequate staffing, which we do not, if we had adequate subs, which we do not, if we could guarantee responsible behavior by our students, which we can't, like if all of those ifs were fulfilled, perhaps we could push forward, but none of that is happening. Um, and I think that the health and safety of our community should be our top priority. And it's hard for me to imagine living in a community in which that isn't the priority. Um, and working for a district for which that is not the priority. And with this vote, I think you're telling us what your priority is. And I urge you to listen to your teachers. And I urge you to listen to your teachers. It's easy to celebrate us when we, when things are going really well. But it's even more important to listen to and celebrate our teachers when times are hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy Schechner, if you could please unmute and make your comment?
Hi, and this is Randy's wife, Kristen Schechner, it's K R I S T I N Z S C H A E C H N E R. And first of all, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for listening. And I also want to say that I am a music specialist, as well as my husband is a music specialist. And for me, getting back to school was one of the greatest things and seeing my kids was just so great. And to this day, I still haven't seen all my kids because I'm co-horted with grade levels and I just can't wait to see them all in the classroom and get to talk to them and see them. I also want to talk about, I've already been in seven different classrooms and I have to give a huge shout out to all of those teachers that I have been in their classrooms. They have been working so hard to maintain all the precautions that should be maintained. So huge shout out to you. I also want to say that being a music specialist, I am exposed to way more students than just a classroom teacher. My husband is exposed to the same number, which is way more than a classroom teacher because we're both specialists, as well as my second grade student who is exposed to all of the children in his classroom and my kindergarten daughter who is exposed to all of the children in her classroom, as well as the students from other schools that they are exposed to in the YMCA daycare. So my family is exposed to a huge number of children and adults. And that is a huge concern for me and my family as we're looking at going back to hybrid plus. So I also want to talk about social distancing in the classroom. And what I've seen as I push into classrooms, there is not space to social distance. As we stand in hybrid, the teachers' classrooms that I have been in are cramped, to say the least, as far as social distancing. And they have been working so hard to try to keep those kids distanced. It is teaching to that expectation of distancing every single day, so many times a day. And so that is also a huge concern, is that that is a constant, it's a constant concern, like trying to social distance kids. As well as the issues with masks, kids pulling them down to sneeze and talk to you. Like, that's just how it is in elementary school and we think about our kindergarteners. My daughter's a kindergartner, it's hard for them to remember. The last thing that I really wanted to talk about in, at this time, is our nurses who really have not been mentioned and their exposure to all of the students that they are in school with. And I just really don't know, I would like to know why that hasn't been talked about and why our school nurses are still not full-time when we need them to be full-time and we need them to support us in all of this craziness. And some of our schools do not even have nurses in them regularly. So thank you so much for listening and that's all.
Thank you. Erin McLeod, if you could unmute and make your comment?
Hi, my name is Erin McLeod, I'm a teacher at C.S. Porter Middle School. I opened this discussion with my sixth graders today and I wanted to share some of their thoughts with the board. Most of my students were very excited about the idea of moving to hybrid plus. They want to be in school and they want to see more of their friends. I also heard them express fear of someone in their family getting sick. Some of them made comments that they wanted to wait until it felt more safe. Most importantly, they all agreed that there's no comfortable answer and they all expressed that they never want to go back full remote again. I want to remind everyone in this meeting of the grief and the loss that our children felt at the end of the last school year. I think we should do whatever it takes to prevent having to go back to phase zero and make sure that we are ready to do this thing right with staffing and a plan to respond in place if the situation in our community changes again. Because of this, I advocate that we wait for the numbers in our community to decline and stabilize again before we return to hybrid plus or phase two. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Service, if you would please unmute and make your comment?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Service, spelled S E R V I S S. I am a activity coordinator and custodian at Big Sky High School and I am also the custodial rep for the MMCEO Local Number 4711 on their executive board. A lot of things to say, not a lot of time, but let me give you a perspective from, from a custodian. Our staff, the ages of our custodians on our staff are 71, 65, 65, 63, 59, 53, 53, and 43. If you average that out, our average age on our staff is 58. We have older employees. Now, yeah, we can always get a substitute custodian, but there are no substitute custodians. There are very few of them, but with a district this large and a custodial staff this large, we can't cover them. And so guess what happens? We'll get a note from, from ONM and they'll say, oh, there's no one to, you know, cover custodian Joe Smith. I'm just pulling out a name. So we'll offer you four hours of overtime to do the custodian who called out's run. That's four hours to do a full run that takes eight hours. Do you know what happens? We empty the trash, we try to sweep some of the floor, but there's no disinfecting, there's no time to do that. Right now, with this hybrid model that we have, we're maintaining, we can do it just because the limited amount of students that are in the building each day. If you go to hybrid plus, you're doubling the amount of students. Right now, as what I've observed in the hallways, kids are wearing masks, they're, they're following the rules. You double that number, there's going to be less supervision of them. So I guess what I'm just trying to say is, yeah, okay, hybrid plus, but you have to take into consideration the staffing that is needed to clean up with double the amount of students. Now, the other thing too, and this is a quick note, you don't have enough substitute teachers because all of the good substitute teachers are now teaching in the online academy. If we get a sudden rash of callouts from teachers, who's going to teach the, who's going to teach the students? So I guess, please, hold off for a semester, wait till after winter break, please. This is silly, okay, take it slow. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Jackie Wood, if you would please unmute and make your comment?
Hi, yes, I'm Jackie Wood and I teach third grade over at Franklin Elementary School. And I want to start by saying that the current hybrid model is working, however, it is not easy. If teachers wanted the easier route, they would choose to go back full-time. The majority of teachers are saying, we need to stay the course, we should not move into the next phase. We are not saying this because we find this current phase easy. We are saying this with the safety and health of our students and staff in mind. Most of the teachers are parents as well and dealing with the struggles of this phase at home and at work. They are still advocating for us to stay the course. Please listen to us, we care about all our shared kids, they are our top priority every single day. And with them in mind as well as staff, I ask you to listen and please vote down the current motion and let's stay in the current phase until the end of the trimester or semester. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rice, if you could please unmute and state your full name and make your comment?
Hi, my name is Mrs. Reese, it's R E I S S. I am new to Missoula County Public Schools, I teach at MOA. And the reason why I'm talking to you guys today, I'm listening to the comments from everyone for the last couple hours and I wanted to bring a different perspective. I live in San Bernardino, California right now and I work for MOA. And my family and I, me and my husband and two daughters will be moving in two weeks to Missoula. We have family that lives there and we visit every year to Montana and we have wanted to be there for a long time. Long story short, one thing that really urged us to make this the time to move was because I have seen, as a kindergarten teacher who was teaching 31 students for six hours live a day and now those 31 students have come back into the classroom, I have seen how ill-managed the system is here. And I did a lot of research on Montana schools and I just saw how good the students do and how much of a community there is, there's 55,000 cases in San Bernardino right now. And I would really urge you guys to think about, even though you guys have much less cases, think about how that could skyrocket. Think about the other states that are around you and what's going on in those states. And if you follow in those shoes and you move too fast, that could be what happens. And so I would just really urge you guys to look at it from a different perspective as I sit in California and I think about how different things are down here. I hear the same concerns from the teachers up there as the teachers have down here. So just let you know, San Bernardino has 55,000 cases right now. So let's, I think that the teachers have a right to say that moving slow is a good idea so that they also do not get put in the same case that I was in. Thank you and thank you for listening.
Thanks, and I think we're back to the people who want us to speak a second time now?
Yes, that's correct. M E Ellen, if you would unmute and make your comment?
Hi, Michelle Ellen here, M I C H E L L E, last name E L L E N. I'm, I'm a teacher at the MOA. I started out this year teaching remotely at Big Sky High School, so I've been in both options, both the hybrid and the full remote. And I can tell you right now, if you have parents who are saying, if you go back to hybrid plus, we're going to the MOA, there is no more room for students over there. I will give you an example, there are two and a half special ed teachers at the MOA High School. Two teachers, myself and another teacher, we have 37 kids on our caseload, we're teaching nine classes each. We have a halftime teacher who has 29 kids on her caseload and she's only there for halftime. We have one para educator for 105 students at the high school. We have over 30 students in every class for every teacher and most of our teachers are teaching six classes a day. We are swamped, we are overwhelmed. I have been sitting in front of my computer since eight o'clock this morning. I finished putting grades in at five minutes to six tonight so that I could join this meeting. I have been sitting in my computer for 12 hours, this is what my days look like every single day. I beg you to please slow down, back up, give us all a chance, don't increase our burdens. Let us do our job, let us teach to the best of our abilities and don't make things worse because we are not going to be better teachers for your children. We're going to be worse because we're going to be exhausted beyond sustainability. So I'm just asking you, please, be rational, be calm, step back, and wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Olson, if you'd please unmute and make your comment?
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for giving me this second opportunity to talk. I wasn't sure I was able to do a second comment, so I really do appreciate that you allow me to speak one more time. And so I also wanted to thank Mrs. Reese for that out-of-state perspective as an educator. I'd like to also add an international perspective. I do have a teacher friend who was teaching in Thailand. And it was very interesting to note that the small country of 69 million people to date has only had 3,500 cases of COVID and only 59 fatalities because their government took this global pandemic very seriously with very strict measures. Everyone complied and they're able to go back to school full-time in Thailand. And that's what we could do if we have that perseverance that many of the teachers tonight spoke about in terms of getting our curve, getting our curve flattened in terms of COVID rates. We, we know that coronavirus, yes, a global pandemic is nothing but inconvenient, but again, we can't forget that this is unprecedented, coronavirus is highly infectious and none of us are immune. We also need to keep in mind that what does it mean to be hospitalized in an era of COVID? We know that the chance is still pretty slim, but if it does happen to any of our children, any of us who are working parents, any of us without insurance, that a hospital visit will be long and that we will not be able to visit our loved ones or relatives or children in the hospital if they actually do get infected and become hospitalized. That could happen, that is in our future if we don't take these numbers seriously. Also, I'm grateful but also sad that it took a pandemic to get our student-teacher ratios to where they should be. Because as a teacher, it has been absolutely wonderful to be able to work so closely with our students and give them all the attention that they need and deserve because we are not able to do that in the regular setting. And I also feel that our kids who are in the hybrid model so far are doing well and are thriving and are making great progress. And I've seen none of the anxiety issues that have plagued our children when we have classes packed with 31 to 32 children. And lastly, again, the sub shortage is real, there's a reason. We cannot hire more subs because nobody is crazy enough to come into our buildings in the time of a pandemic. As Casey Blue mentioned, we have very low wages and absolutely no insurance, so that's something to take into account. Thank you so much for listening to all of our voices and please consider them as you vote in the next minute. Thank you.
It looks like there's one new person raising her hand and then one person who wants to speak a second time.
Yes, would Kay Lucostic please make your public comment?
Hi, my name is Kim Lucostic, K I M L U C O S T I C. I'm a teacher at Big Sky High School, I teach junior and senior English. And I guess one of the things I really want you to understand is how this, the ripple effect of all of this. I'm one of those teachers who have been identified as a close contact. So I have been out of the classroom for two weeks now, I get to go back on Monday. And not just me, but the student that had COVID and then three of his close friends also happened to be in my classes. They have all been quarantined as well. So a total of five of us have been out of school for two weeks. And I'm working with them online, but it's not the same as them being in class. And so if we bring in all these other students at the same time, I can only see this just exploding. Thankfully, I've had a student-teacher who could be working there while I am on the Google Meet up on the big screen. But there was one day where she couldn't be there because her child was sick. And so I had a para in there and my para was awesome, but she had to go other places. So I don't know what would have happened if my student-teacher couldn't have been in there and if I can't come back. Would there be a substitute and how consistent would that substitute be? Would it be one substitute a day, one substitute another day? So I really just want you to understand that it doesn't, like, it doesn't just affect the one COVID student, it's going to affect a lot more students and they're going to be out of school, just like their teachers. I'm really concerned about bringing in 22-plus students back. My room is not big enough to socially distance. And I really think that, you know, I'm, I'm teaching juniors and seniors, so they're very socially active. And so I am kind of nervous and a little bit concerned about getting back into the classroom because I don't want to be out of the classroom again for another 14 days. So, and plus, I had to pay 50 bucks out of pocket to take the rapid test, which our insurance doesn't cover. So, I don't know, I just think you need to realize that this is not just an isolated situation where one kid gets sick. It spreads out. It spreads out and more kids are out of class because they have been named as close contacts. Thank you, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. But, um, I think we need to take this slow and we really need to, like, make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Shepherd, if you would unmute and make your public comment?
I'm not Nick Shepherd, I'm his daughter. I'm Lauren Shepherd, S.H.E.P.H.E.R.D. I've been listening to the comments and I'd like to thank everyone for their input. I'm speaking as a student in MCPS and specifically at Sentinel High School. My teachers are doing the best that they can. However, I know that I am not getting as good an education as I deserve. My friends and I are anxious to be back in school every day to ensure we are, as the district mission statement says, holiday ready at the end of our senior year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we have one additional raised hand. Tom McClintock, if you would unmute and make your comment? Mr. McClintock, I see you're unmuted. Are you planning to make a comment?
It looks like his hand has gone down.
I lowered it, I thought he was talking. Yes, sir, go right ahead and make your comment.
He appears to be having a mic issue, it looks like he's fixing it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, Trustee Decker, I appreciate that. I'd just like to say that, um, these past few board meetings have been the first time in my life I have ever felt compelled to speak up, um, and provide public comment at a school board meeting. And I only do so because so much is at stake. I know that they are very important normally, but they aren't usually quite literally a matter of life and death. You've heard from so many people, so many of your teachers, your janitors, your para educators, that you need to go slow. Take your time, don't race it. You've heard from all of your, uh, staff and faculty unions that they want you to go slow and to not move forward with this plan of going into hybrid plus, which is just phase two in All But Name Only. I mean, one day a week, regardless of what Dr. Watson has said, isn't going to make a difference. You're still having kids packed into classrooms two feet apart for four days a week. And you're going to see cases spiking, not only in your high schools, but you're going to start seeing cases spiking in your kids in middle schools and elementary schools, not just the staff. I mean, they're sitting there for two and a half hours pressed together like, well, sardines, are, are they really not going to get some virus on them? Please take this moment to think about how you'll feel, about, really take it to heart about how it will feel if, if a kid dies from this or, as some other people have pointed out, has lasting repercussions of health issues. It causes major issues, uh, to heart, brain, lung, venous system. It's just horrible. So please keep people safe, keep your staff safe, keep your students safe, keep our community safe. Thank you.
At this point, I do not see any additional hands.
Okay, Trustee Lorenzen wanted to ask a procedural question, I believe.
Madam Chair, I request permission to withdraw my motion?
So the procedure that is followed, if the person making the motion asks to withdraw it, is that the chair asks if there's any objections from any trustee for the motion having been withdrawn at this point? If there's an objection, then we vote on the motion to withdraw. If there is no objections, then the motion is withdrawn and the process starts again. So is there any objection to the motion to withdraw? Or the motion to withdraw, the motion that's on the table?
You did that, Mark, look at Steve as a cat!
Okay, I can't see Trustee Wake, I can see Trustee Decker, and if she doesn't indicate that she's objecting, I can't see Trustee McDonald.
I'm just scanning, I do not see any signal from Trustee Wake, I'm looking for Trustee McDonald now.
Okay, then the motion is...
I guess I have a related procedural question. If the motion is withdrawn or the motion fails, what is currently in place is what we approved last meeting, is that correct?
Well, there could be a different motion made. And if that motion is defeated, then what we enacted last week, which had us moving into phase two more quickly and even into hybrid more quickly, would be in effect.
Thank you.
Trustee McDonald placed in the chat that she is with Diane. I take that to mean she has no objection.
So with that, with there being no objection, then the motion that has just been discussed is withdrawn. So at this point, it's up to any trustee to make a different motion. Otherwise, the mo, the decision we made at the last meeting remains in effect.
Trustee Decker has raised her hand.
Trustee Decker?
I would like to move that we remain in the hybrid model through at least November ninth and continue to watch the data. And, uh, if I need to say something else about that, it would be that we make a decision based on cases, uh, stable and preferably declining at that time.
So just so I can clarify, that would be applicable not to Sealy because Sealy's under a different model. And you want Willard also to stay under hybrid as opposed to hybrid plus. So it would be until November, at the beginning of the week of November ninth or the end of the week of November ninth?
Uh, the beginning of the week of November ninth, but that we would continue to follow data and revisit, um, at the, uh, before then.
So do all board members understand the motion?
Quarter, right, that, that's the quarter.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, I was talking over you.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I'm correct, that that would be through the end of the first quarter.
So I understand, if we look at our chart, what you're proposing is that K5 not move into hybrid until the end of week eleven and 68 not move into hybrid until the end of week eleven, but there is really no difference to the proposal for 912 and for Willard?
Correct, and, or for Sealy.
So I, I think that Trustee Lorenzen actually clarified it in a productive way. If we're looking at the chart, instead of moving into hybrid plus the week of, the ninth week of school, which is October nineteenth, it would move into hybrid plus the week of November ninth because that's the end of the, is that correct, Dr. Watson? That's the end of the quarter or semester? Semester?
If cases are stable or declining.
Okay. So if I, if I restate the motion and you concur, then I'll be looking for a second. So the motion is to remain in hybrid through the week of November sixth, moving into hybrid plus the week of November ninth, assuming that all the other considerations that have been discussed are considered. If there's significant shifts in numbers, either up or down, we can revisit it earlier. Otherwise, our decision at this time would be to move into hybrid, hybrid plus at the end of the quarter, except that would not apply to Sealy. Is that correct, Trustee Decker?
Yep, that works.
So now, is there a second? Okay, it was seconded by Trustee Service and Trustee Wake. So now we go back to board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
I, I guess I was very convinced by the teachers who said hybrid was working. And I was, I was very convinced by the fact that they're getting the intensive time with their kids and they feel that that's moving them forward, particularly, uh, Mr. Rosberg, who presented us data to that regard. Because in the end, we want what's best for the kids. We don't want to act out of fear, we want to act in a positive way. And so I really appreciate the people that told us what was working. And, and I, I support this motion.
Is there any other board discussion? I'm, oh, Trustee De, is that Trustee Decker? Sorry, I don't have it. It's Trustee Decker and her dog.
It's Trustee Decker and Cricket, who's come to join us. I, I do, I want to, um, say that we, we will certainly be revisiting this again. This is not the last time that we're going to have this conversation. Something important for people to keep in mind is that the CARES Act funding that is providing a lot of the supports, including childcare in our community, exists as of now through the end of this calendar year. At this point, there's about two and a half million dollars at least that's come into our community to support childcare and other, um, of the needs that children have on their out-of-school days. And those programs have barely begun to swing into action. I really would encourage our community to continue to think about how we support kids on those out-of-school, not-in-the-building days in ways that make that work much better for kids and families. Because I am hearing loud and clear that what's happening when kids are not in the school buildings is not ideal. But what's happening when they are is actually working pretty well. So sticking with a plan that lets us continue to build seems like a wise move and a way to use our resources to continue to get more kids and more families what they need. It just isn't going to happen the way that we did it before the pandemic for right now.
Thank you. Trustee Mercer?
So I too was very much struck by that they might be learning more anecdotes. I guess I think it is incumbent upon the district to put data to that as soon as possible. I mean, that is obviously a critical question. The other thing I would just say is these kids are somewhere. They are in the YMCA, that is less safe. At a community level, working parents are making the decision to put their kid with their elderly parent because that's who's available. People are taking risks all along. We, if we are doing this, are offloading the risks from ourselves to parents and their support groups, to the YMCA. We are mixing kids across the town and then putting them back in our schools for two days. So I guess I am not sold that it's safer to do that. I have not heard county health say that we are the ones driving this. I certainly don't see that for elementary. I could buy it from high school. And if someone wanted to make a motion to keep high school, I agree with that. But I don't think we are driving this. I have not heard anyone from a medical perspective say that. I am not convinced it's safer to go back. First, not convinced it's safer to keep mixing. I would love to see data about whether it's working better as an educational thing. And I think that needs data.
Is there any trustee old person?
I too think that, um, we, we all want data. And I'm really happy that the teachers were able to provide some of that tonight in their public comments. And I do see hybrid working for my family and my, different people in my community. I've seen how it works. And I want to sustain it as long as we can. And I am in favor of Trustee Decker's motion. And known in the fact that I know November ninth will come and I will make sure to vote then too on what I think is important for the community's public safety.
Thanks. Any other public comment online? Oh, Trustee Service, sorry.
I would say I support this motion, but I, the key is that the data has to be that the cases are steady or in decline before we go back to in-person five days a week.
Any other public comment? Or board comment before we move on to public comment? I just want to say I appreciate the idea that we look at some data as the larger discussion has been, where are the kids when they're not in school? This was not increasing class size, the original motion, because it kept the same cohort together, it just meant they were in school for two more days. It sounds like a lot, there's great support to keeping them not in school for three days a week from, you know, the community we heard from tonight. But I would appreciate finding out, as several people have pointed out, whether or not they're safer when they're not in school. So I don't know how to gather that data other than anecdotally. But with that being said, since the hybrid model does seem to be working, I would support the motion.
Can I, can I add more comment? Is it too late for that?
Nope, we're just before we're going to take public comment.
Can, can I still add one more comment?
Yeah, I said yes, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of muffled.
Okay, sorry. Uh, I would want to speak just for a quick second to what's happening when kids are in the out-of-school, um, days. And, um, I, I, in my, in my day job, I work closely with childcare program partners. And so I can speak to the fact that those programs are doing what they can to keep children co-horted with school peers as much as possible. That's obviously a huge challenge, but they have set up programs that are school-based as much as possible. Um, and what they are also doing is following, um, small group size requirements and using all of the, um, kinds of, uh, physical distancing, including being outdoors, um, that you would hope to see to keep kids safe. For the most part, children in those programs are in groups that are small and more like the hybrid approach. That's the goal of those program partners, is keeping kids in small groups. And so just as people think about that question, it is a really important question and a really challenging one to try to keep kids in cohorts during the hybrid model. And I've spoken to that before. But I will say that, um, if we're not seeing huge numbers of cases in that age group, those, we didn't see that during the summer when kids were in, um, summer camps that followed those same kinds of precautions of group size and PPE and so on. And that's what's happening in our program partners. Bringing kids together in smaller indoor spaces where the numbers are twice as much or more, um, feels like a very different situation to me.
Thanks, any other board comment? I, I just, I haven't found Trustee Wake or Trustee McDonald.
Trustee McDonald is raising her hand.
Okay, Trustee McDonald?
Okay, I just, I don't know what, what we're doing at the administrative level as far as, um, working on getting, you know, more subs or more teachers. I don't, I, I don't know what the protocol is at, but I think that between now and November ninth, that we try to really focus on trying to get, get the, the teachers that are already working, get them a little bit more, um, support and somebody, and other people to kind of fall back on when needed. I just, I just think that this is, this is really crucial for the teachers that are, that are, that are doing everything they can do. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Avkiras?
Thank you. You know, I, I, I agree with Trustee Mercer and a lot of what he said. I do agree with a lot of what Trustee Decker has said. My concern was with this original plan, and I did second it, and I would support that if it came back up again. But my one concern was that this is pretty quick. You know, when we, when we make a decision, say that it's middle of next week, I don't know that four or five more days where the data's enough to make a good decision. Then we're going to ask our teachers to go back into a class a week and a half later every day, change what they've been doing. So, you know, I find myself supporting what Trustee Decker's putting here. If nothing else, it gives our teachers a vision out, it gives us two or three weeks to look at data, to look at hopefully that downward curve. And we can say in our October thirteenth or October twenty-seventh meeting, this is looking good, we're going to do this and the teachers have time to prepare that for that. So, um, I'm torn both ways, but I like the vision of being able to look at data and hopefully, as long as our community members are responsible and especially our eighteen to twenty-four-year-old demographic in Missoula County. and especially our 18- to 24-year-old demographic in Missoula County, if they can wear their masks and social distance from each other and we can calm this thing back down, maybe we can all be good community partners together and get our kids back in school beginning of November.
Thank you. Any other public or board comment? Public comment at this time? Again, if you raise your hand and then state your first and last name and limit your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Casey Baloo, if you'd unmute and make your comment?
I promise I'll be super quick. I just wanted to give a big shout out and thank you for listening to all of us and for hearing what we said and acting on it. We appreciate that, and we look forward to further conversations as we continue on in our pandemic. Thanks.
Thanks. It looks like there's two or three more.
Ashley's iPhone, if you'd unmute and make your public comment?
Yes, this is Ashley Hilliard, H-I-L-L-I-A-R-D. I also would just like to say thank you for taking into account the comments that were made. I also would ask that, just as Trustee Decker mentioned and her role as a day job, that we watch our assumptions about the safety of the community programs. I have three children enrolled in two different programs, sometimes three different programs, depending on how full one of them gets and the different costs. And those, that seems to change often. And I know that those programs, especially the two that have received or have announced that they've received funding through the CARES Act, would be, I'm sure, willing to have a conversation with the school about how they can help improve the remote learning support that they're offering and the different ways that they are supporting your students and our children on those remote learning days. So I'm just asking that assumptions and our biases are checked as we are moving forward and making those informed decisions. Thank you.
Thanks. Who's next?
Kim Olson, if you'd unmute and make your comment?
Hi, yeah, I would really like to thank the board for voting for Grace Decker's motion. That really restores my faith in your decisions. And I again want to give another sincere thank you to Lena Old Person, too, for recognizing and reminding us how resilient our children really are. And in fact, I think our kids are often more resilient than we, parents and teachers. So I guess, and we just do need to remember, as successful as this hybrid schedule is, and even I did have my sincere doubts before the school year began, I'm grateful for having these small classes, grateful for being able to see my students again. But even with these small classes, coronavirus is creeping into our community, well, into our school buildings, I should say. And we do want to keep everyone safe. So thank you for delaying the phase into the hybrid plus and the phase two. And hopefully, we will be back to normal soon. Thank you.
Thanks. It looks like there's another.
Marissa, if you would unmute and make your public comment?
Thank you so much for listening. I feel you've restored a lot of trust and faith within our community tonight. Thank you again.
There are no additional public comments? Oh, sorry. Kim Butler, if you would unmute and make your public comment?
Thank you again so much. Just reiterating, thank you for listening. Thank you for extending the phase that we're in. Thank you for thinking of the safety of the students, the staff, and the community. It is much appreciated. Thank you.
Tricia Owens, if you'd unmute and make your public comment?
I just wanted to express my gratitude also. I have been sitting through these very long meetings, week after week, and listening to everybody pour their hearts out. And it's great to finally feel like the teachers' voices have been heard. Please keep in mind, as we move forward, those other things that we want to see happen before kids come back in. We need to be staffed. We need to have materials so that we can keep meeting the needs of these students and keep seeing them learn and progress and all that. But thank you so much for listening.
Wrong button. Sorry about that. No other... So see, no other public comment? Then all trustees in favor of the motion that's been seconded, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's Trustee Agueras, Trustee Sturbe, Trustee Old Person, Trustee Lorenzen, Trustee Holland. And could you check to see if...
Trustee Decker and Trustee Wake, I see, and Trustee McDonald have all said yes.
And all those opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is Trustee Vogel and Trustee Mercer, so the motion carries. So then, thank you to everyone for your input. And we'll move on to the new business action item, which is slightly erroneously worded. It is not for me to appoint two trustees to the COVID-19 response team, but as the recommendation down is below, is to see if there are two volunteers who would like to serve on it. And so...
Hello, this is Trustee Wake. I would volunteer.
Okay, do you want three or two?
Hello?
Well, there were two here and one here, so I'm checking with Superintendent Watson if three as opposed to two will work with the numbers he had admitted or envisioned for the task force. So we'll have Trustee Agueras, Trustee Vogel, and Trustee Wake will be working with the administration on the response team.
I'm sorry. I also raised my hand. I'm not sure how we would make a decision in that instance.
So how many do you want?
This wasn't fast enough.
Sorry. Trustee Decker, are you asking to volunteer or are you asking how decisions will be made? I was confused.
I'm volunteering if there's still an opening. It sounds like we went from two to three, and I know that we can't have everyone, so I just...
Yes. I, you know, I... Part of the purpose of this committee is to really get a broad perspective from a variety of stakeholders. I just don't want to overload the committee with one particular group of stakeholders. So, you know, I was envisioning two teachers, two classified members, two parents. So trying to keep it balanced that way. I'd be okay with three because there's a chance that maybe somebody can't be at the meeting, and so we have a sort of an extra. But if there's going to be four, then my suggestion would be we put everybody's name in a hat and just choose three of them.
Trustee Vogel, you had your hand kind of up?
I am okay to withdraw if that would be more appropriate.
So we'll three, look?
I also don't mean to make a bigger issue out of this than it needs to. This is not a decision-making body. It's more an advisory group. Is that right?
That's correct.
So are three? So Trustee Wake, Trustee Decker, and Trustee Agueras. And if we need a backup, Trustee Vogel could be the backup. How does that sound? But thank you all for being interested in helping with the response team because it does help to have broad perspective in terms of everyone having some voice before it comes to the board level. So thank you all for volunteering. Then we move on to new business B, which is to approve the lease of a portion of Mount Jumbo Elementary. So this is an elementary action item, and I don't know. I think Pat's probably going to speak to it.
All right, thank you. So the agenda item references a six-month lease. And I've been talking with folks from the YMCA since we put this item on the agenda and would look instead at a month-to-month tenancy for the space. It's really a limited use of space. We're talking about two classrooms and the restrooms and potentially the kitchen. The concept here is that the YMCA is experiencing some expanded demand for services for school-age childcare. And they would be providing a full-day enrichment program, support for our remote learning program during remote learning days. And then the facility at Mount Jumbo would be used for food distribution. Currently, we have the Family Resource Center at the Rattlesnake delivering food to that area. And it's been well-received. So I think the offering of that delivery point at Mount Jumbo would be likewise well-received. I think Trustee Decker had mentioned some additional funds that are coming into some of these programs, childcare services that support our students, and this would be one. So the program cost for families would be low and in the range between $5 to $20 per day. The YMCA would also look to license these services, which would allow the program to be sustained in a similar pricing structure, even after those funds have to be exhausted, which is, as mentioned, December 30th. And they would do so as a licensed program through the Best Beginning Scholarships and some YMCA financial assistance. And then finally, they would offer their programming to mirror with MCPS phases, so where we're at and which phase we're at as a school district. So we haven't had an opportunity to complete the agreement, but you guys have seen a number of these. The terms would be similar to what you've seen. We had asked the lessee, on a very small scale. This is probably not something we typically do, is to lease two classrooms in an entire school. But under the circumstances, this makes a lot of sense. And we'd be looking at a $3 per square foot rental with some coverage for utilities. And then, as mentioned, a month-to-month tenancy. So both the district and the tenant could terminate on 30-day notice, the tenancy, if it was in their best interest. And I think that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess, what's the status of the gym at Mount Jumbo? Is it being rented to groups for use right now?
No, we're not renting the gyms out in any of our schools right now. And it's something I talked to the Y about, is we wouldn't want to turn it into a gym usage situation. The gym would be used to distribute food. So at this time, it would just be used for the food delivery and possibly some remote instruction for our students.
Any other questions of Pat? Seeing no hands up, then is there a motion from a K-12 trustee? Let me get the right language. To approve a month-to-month lease or making that modification of a portion of Mount Jumbo School to the Missoula YMCA for the purpose of providing childcare services to the families of MCPS students subject to successful negotiations of a lease. It's moved by Trustee Old Person. Is there a second? Okay, Trustee Decker has seconded. So is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I'm obviously really thrilled that this is happening. It's exactly the kind of thing that I hoped might come together. I think the kids in East Missoula, who have to travel so far up to Rattlesnake, are among the highest needs in our district in many ways. And there's really very little infrastructure for kids and families in the community. So I'm absolutely thrilled that this partnership is coming together. I'm glad, I would want to see us do anything that we can to support it.
Any other board comment? I'll echo what Trustee Decker said. I'm glad that, I don't know if we reached out to them or they reached out to us, but it is a great partnership, so. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. If you can confirm, Trustee McDonald and Trustee Decker? Yeah, I see Decker. I just haven't found Trustee McDonald on.
She chatted, yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. And now we come to item number seven, which is public comment on non-agenda items. We give the public an opportunity at the beginning and end of every meeting to provide public comment on something that we haven't discussed tonight, something they want to bring to our attention. Is there any public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing no blue hands up, then we are adjourned. Thank you.